We call a meeting of the board of supervisors to order. Today is Thursday, August 1st, 2019. It is just 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 8:51 East Williams Street in our very own Carson City. We're also streaming on the internet and on charter, on cable TV if you've got Charter. Can we have a roll call for the record, please, Kathy?
I'll do it. Good morning Supervisor Giomi.
Good morning, I'm here.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell.
Here.
Supervisor Barrett.
Here.
Mayor Crowell.
Thanks, I'm here. Thank you, Aubrey. All right, can we call our good friend Ken Haskins of the First Christian Church to get us started today? Good morning, Ken, rock and rev.
Father, we just thank you for this beautiful summer day. It's so abundant, rich, and full of the breeze. We're just so grateful. We're grateful for this fine city, Carson City, state's capital, and for most of us in this room, its home. It's a wonderful place to live where we find strong faith, loving families, good neighbors, lifelong friends. But every community has its issues, Lord, and we know that we have leaders to deal with those. And so we pray for our mayor and the supervisors here today, that you grant them a degree of wisdom as you did Solomon of old, to provide them the clarity of vision and the understanding, the wisdom to make good decisions on behalf of all who call Carson City home, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you, Ken. Good work. Sheriff, for one, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Sheriff. Both, thanks to both, Ken. All right. Excuse me. Let's now move on to item number five, public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this public body. Public comment, ready to go. Ah ha. How was the fair?
You tell me.
It was wonderful. It was wonderful.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Supervisors, I'd like to take a minute this morning to thank you for your gracious support for the Carson City Fair. This year, we were able to overcome many issues from last year. For example, the livestock in the barns were way too hot last year. This year, opening up the windows and using the portico that the city guys provided us helps make them more comfortable. This year, we also had 142 animals in that barn, which is a big increase from last year. Another issue that we faced was the consistent funding for the fair. Last year, we had two concerts, which were attended by maybe 150 people combined. This year, the demolition derby was a huge success.
You can say that again.
Night one, we estimated around 900 people attended. And then night two, we sold out within 30 minutes of opening the gate. And people were lining up at 4:30. The gate didn't open until 6:30. There was maybe, we sold 1,200 tickets, but we estimate that there was probably 1,600 people there because they found other ways in. Everyone had a great time. We've got lots of ideas how to make it better. I just want to say thank you and that your support's graciously appreciated.
We'd like to thank you for putting on something for the benefit of our entire community and reminding us, you know, what, where food for our table comes from and what it means to, you know, to live off the land and to be good shepherds of the environment and good shepherds of those that we live with. You folks just did a wonderful job. And I'm not saying that just because I got to beat the first car up with a slide cam. You just did a wonderful job. And I see you've got two of our young folks right there. How'd you enjoy it? Pretty good? You like it? How about you, young man?
I liked it.
All right.
She won championship poultry. Her age division for showmanship for poultry and for rabbits. And then she placed third in round robin. This year, we were able to give up, give out over 200 ribbons to our youth for the livestock. So those numbers are just going to keep getting bigger. We're looking to add meat pens for turkeys and rabbits next year and meat poultry. So, cornish.
Good. Well, I think I mentioned to all of you when I was there Friday night, I had a, I just happened to have a NACO meeting that morning and met with the cooperative extension coordinator out of UNR Ivory and mentioned to him that, you know, this fair is important to Carson City, it's important to the community, it's important we not lose sight of where, you know, what makes this world go around, right at the ground level. And I told him, you know, because we, I think, last time, you know, there was some concern that they were stepping out of their bounds, that the cooperative extension was stepping out of its bounds by doing this. And I told him, this is an important part of what you folks do. And I'm here to tell you, you know, do not do that again to them. To understand that this is an important part of our community. And I think you got that message. Okay? All right? Anybody else?
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, excuse me.
I'd just like to say thank you too. And thank Lisa too, for us too. My wife was one of the judges for textiles matters down there. And good fair.
Thank you.
And congratulations to you, young lady, for your awards. Very good. All right. Good way to start the morning. Okay, other public comment. Good morning. Come on up. How we doing today? There you go.
Danny French, Carson City, Nevada. And I think with the flow of the energy today that I will withhold what I had suggested perhaps to read, but it's regarding requirements of disclosure and abstinence. And Mayor and I, you talked, I talked to you about my concerns about everyone voting and making sure that unless there were extreme issues as far as conflicts of monetary or gifts or loans or significant other considerations, that voting should be really the top priority and you should only abstain when it's absolutely necessary. And I appreciate all of your efforts and I hope to get to more of the meetings. But I want to thank all those that worked for the fair and everything as well. So in the spirit of the day, I'm just going to keep my comments brief. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Did you ride a scooter yesterday?
No, I didn't think you had enough insurance.
All right.
But thank you very much.
All right. All right, other public comment. Good morning. Looking casual today.
Always. My name is Jim Shirk. My name is Jim Shirk. I'll read my statement.
Good morning.
It's easier. Morning.
Give it.
Just a few years ago, the board put into effect a method of how to select a city manager. This procedure was discarded at a later board meeting as the mayor said, "I will ask Nancy if she wants the job." There are numerous city employees and potential outside qualified candidates that were not given an opportunity to apply for this position. What is even more bizarre is that the mayor did not ask Stacy if he wanted the job, as he had previously applied for this very position. While on the subject of trash, let's talk about waste management. This board approved a contract that forces all homeowners to use this service. That is, unless the individual customer can prove that they meet the very strict criteria required by waste management to opt out, to opt out of this service. This board needs to examine how citizens are put through such a major ordeal and change this procedure. The mayor and the mayor pro tem retains the discretion in deciding whether or not an item can be pulled from the consent agenda by any supervisor. This is completely absurd. This action infringes upon the rights of an elected official to represent their constituents by silencing their voice on an agenda item. By the way, who would regulate the both of them if they wanted to pull an item? The board will today examine how to hire former employees for temporary assignments. If I have my facts correct, Andy Burham has been collecting his pears along with the city paycheck, and probably Larry Warner will be back on payroll if he isn't already. The amount of funds available in the budget for consulting services is extremely alarming. The city employs numerous very qualified personnel, many making over $100,000 a year. And then, the city outsources work that should be accomplished by these same employees. It is time to conduct an efficiency study to determine exactly what the taxpayers are receiving for their investment in the city personnel. As a reminder to the public, Brad and Laurie's newspaper article on street repair was largely a scheme of "it ain't us, there just ain't money." They've had a responsibility to do what they are paid to do, and that is find solutions like they did when they together collaborated to have Colorado Street fixed a few years ago. Mayor, I respectfully request that you find time to develop an agenda item requiring some type of action from the board regarding finding funding in the existing city budget for street repairs. In closing, I look forward to the 2020 mayor race. I believe that we have several very qualified and proven candidates that will serve our community well. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? Okay, I don't see any. We have public comment throughout the meeting as we go along. We also have public comment at the end. So if the urge gets there, while we're talking on an item, raise your hand. Okay. Let's now take up item number six, possible approval of the minutes of July 3rd, 2019. Everybody had a chance to look at those minutes?
I live in here, so I'm not going to make a connection.
Motion's in order.
You guys have the motion button?
No. Okay.
I move to approve the minutes of July 3rd, 2019 as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay.
One abstention.
Four ayes, one abstention. See, I think it's going to come up there. Good. All right. Thanks. Well done. All right. Let's now take up the agenda. City manager, any changes to the agenda?
Just that we're going to pull item 13A.
13, what was that again?
13A. Dr. McElstrom's, there's another contract coming from the courts at the next meeting, so he requested that we do them both at the same time.
All right. Board members, any changes you want to the agenda? All right, unless there's objection, then we will take the, we will take the agenda as published. Now let's move on to special presentations. I've asked the board to come down on the dais with us and we'll do some, talk to one of our good employees who's got the employee of the quarter award, Mr. Wentworth. Come on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I've got to ask you again.
This morning, we have a very important part of Carson City, a great place to live. It's also an important part of what makes our city staff.
This morning, we have an opportunity to thank one of our employees who makes Carson City a better place to live. And it also is a way to tell our staff how much we appreciate what they do for us. This morning, I'd like to recognize as the employee of the quarter Nicholas Wentworth. Nick, come on up. Haven't seen you for, since we were out there with, what was it? Home Depot. Out of the cemetery. You know, I just hear good things about you everywhere around. But Nick, the employee of the quarter, who? I'm going to, huh? Where's Dan? Come on up, Dan. Dan, why don't you talk about it, then I'll read the proclamation.
Okay. So the reason why I nominated Nick Wentworth for employee of the quarter is his dedication to the department and the way that he has changed what we've done department-wide in regards to efficiency and dealing with declining staff numbers and still providing a very high-quality level of service. Not only redoing all of our route work and discussing efficiencies and getting the right people into those positions to make those things work, but also reevaluating things over at the cemetery. Most notable, as Mayor Crowell was talking about, he worked with Home Depot, received a $12,000 donation from Home Depot for plants, tools, all kinds of stuff. And we had over, how many individuals for that volunteer day?
60.
60 individuals in the cemetery for a full eight-hour day. And we got a ton of stuff accomplished. It was actually, you know, truly unbelievable. I haven't seen any, any effort like that at a city facility since I've been here. So, and it was all, all due to Nick's efforts and, you know, diligence, persistence, and just dedication to the department and the city itself.
Thanks, Dan.
Well, it was a wonderful day out there seeing the Home Depot folks, 60 of them out there.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that was a tremendous, you know, that's, when you ask these corporations to stand up like that, a lot of them come out here and just really turn and burn for us. So my hat's off to you for asking those folks to come out and help us. So Nick, I want to read a proclamation. I don't want you to blush here. Okay? All right. This is a proclamation of the board of supervisors recognizing Nicholas Wentworth, Parks Maintenance Coordinator, as the employee of the quarter. Whereas Carson City's quality of life attracts talented and local and loyal employees, and whereas every day Carson City employees put to use their broad array of skills and expertise with efficiency and integrity for the benefit of everyone in our city. And whereas Carson City values its employees and acknowledges that recognizes, and that recognizing employees for their hard work and dedication is critical to the future health and growth of our city. And whereas we owe a substantial debt of gratitude to the Carson City employees and applaud those who go above and beyond in their loyalty and ability. And whereas Nicholas Wentworth, Parks Maintenance Coordinator, is an exceptional individual with tremendous work ethic, he has established a partnership with Home Depot securing more than $12,000 in donations and thereby contributing to the fulfillment of the city's mission, values, and vision. And whereas it's an honor to be selected for this award by your coworkers, and it speaks highly of your work performance and how it is perceived by others, including all of us up here on the board. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowell, Mayor of Carson City, celebrate the special trust and confidence in the loyalty, integrity, and ability of Nicholas Wentworth, and do hereby proclaim Nicholas Wentworth to be employee of the quarter for Carson City and encourage everyone to join me in this very special recognition. Nicholas, let me give this to you. Hopefully you get it framed. It's not just a piece of paper. It's from all of us in this community, not just the board, not just those in this room, but your entire community, who wants to thank you for everything you're doing to make Carson City a better place to work, live, and play, and in certain circumstances, be the final resting place for some folks. Nicholas, here you go. All right. Come on, say something.
I didn't. I don't know what to say. I just come to work and do my job. But that's how I know how to work. So I appreciate the recognition, and it always means a lot more when somebody recognizes hard work. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
We got more than, we got more than a piece of paper. We have some cash.
Well, that's good.
All right, that's good. So.
Here is $200. We'll go up here and we'll take a picture of that. But that's for you to spend. Who's donating the money? Is this coming out of your salary, Nancy?
There's a budget in the city managers.
All right, all right. Very good. Well, that's, let's come on up here. We'll get a good picture. Come on. Get in the middle.
And if we could have his family come up too and join us?
Yep.
Oh, her sister.
There you go. You want to hold this one?
Sure.
There you go. Maybe have the kid, there you go. Look at that good smile.
Hold that, right?
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing your husband with us. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Ooh, sorry.
Okay.
That was Jack.
I appreciate it.
Now we have another presentation by another entity that is an important part of Carson City in, on many different levels, including the education of our children. So we're going to hear this morning, a presentation by Jessica Daniels, who's the, we call you the superintendent of the Montessori School, is that what it is?
Principal.
Principal. Principal. Okay, principal. You're the, the big leader, let's put it like that. Okay. Come on up, Jessica. Let's hear what's going on with Montessori School. Bring up who you want. Got a couple of kids with you here too. That's good.
My name is Sadie Brown. I'm the leader of Carson Montessori Student Legislative Team. We served this year during Nevada's 80th legislative session. In the past year since Carson Montessori last spoke to you, we have accomplished some pretty amazing things. The real world is our classroom, and Carson Montessori is an extraordinary learning environment. Our curriculum is wrapped to include all of life's real adventures, and we have the opportunity to explore and discover every day. The whole school united to support kindergartner Ms. Maya the Dragon on her journey to remission. By collecting pennies, we were able to raise over $2,000, making Carson Montessori a Gold Star School with the National Leukemia Foundation. And our Ms. Maya has been named a national hero. She will be appearing as a spokesperson for the foundation nation, for the foundation across the nation.
My name is, oh, my name is.
Steve, there, bring it up a little closer. There you go.
My name is Sawyer Ross. Carson Montessori has many community partners in education. Some include the River Wranglers, San Nevada Journeys, Chat in the Classroom, UNR's Ag Department, and the Water Conservancy. Students are a part of the Snapshot Day and assist the Bureau of Water Quality when they sample Carson City's water. In fourth grade, after doing extensive scientific research, the students wrote a grant to the Carson City Rotary to establish, establish a hydroponic garden.
Where was that picture taken?
Down below in our fourth grade classroom.
Okay.
Today, students have harvested over 800 pounds of fresh produce from the garden, which is donated to fish.
Good morning, young man.
Thank you. My name is Hank Brown. Another partner is the Lodge Memory Care, where students and residents do projects together like reading, writing, and cooking. They are following the Montessori-style curriculum to help treat dementia. This summer, the residents are attending to our hydroponic garden. They water, harvest, and use the produce. Carson Montessori sponsored a karma box, which will be filled with items to help those in need. Each class will take turns filling the box. Carson Montessori has a foam maker's lab. With plasma printers and 3D printers we build ourselves. We can print anything, even guitars. We have 3D pens, we make robots, rockets, we build and fly drones, we even make ice cream out of liquid nitrogen.
How do you do that?
Um.
Very carefully, as Supervisor Bonkowski says.
Well, you get all the ingredients, like the half and half milk and the sugar, and then you can put any flavor, and then the liquid nitrogen makes it very cold and harden.
Very good. Very good.
Sadie Brown. This year, Carson Montessori became part of the Enable Project. We manufacture prosthetic hands for children around the world. Based on doctor specifications, this year, we sent 51 hands, one made by every student in upper elementary, and this is done at no cost to the child who receives it.
Show, show that a little bit, put that on TV a little bit so we can see that there. Now, did you make that through 3D printing or what'd you do?
Yeah, 3D printer. And then you put it together, and then we send it to a university in New York, and they put all the hardware in it, and then send it off to the kids to use.
Good.
Our hard work hasn't gone unnoticed. Even the governor thinks we're pretty awesome. After extensive work, we earned the governor's official STEM designation, the only school in Carson City. Carson Montessori has always had a student legislative team. We've worked on significant bills that affect Nevada's education, many times at the request of legislators, such as Nevada Civics Law, Nevada's financial literacy standards, state mandated testing, teacher licensure, and the ability for charter schools to bond. This year, we followed the legislative process from start to finish. We wrote a bill, partnered with Assemblywoman Sarah Peters, we lobbied it through the legislature, it passed unanimously, and it was signed into law on April 23rd, making Neon Nevada's official state element. AB 182, making Neon Nevada's state element garnered support from all sides, unified the state, had no cost, and we learned so much. Many of us now want to be legislators when we grow up. And these are just a few of the many positive contributions Carson Montessori has made to our community this year. Thank you for this opportunity to share.
There's some amazing stuff you folks are doing. That's really, amazing's probably too soft to word. That's tremendous. You know, and some of us older folks here, not anybody else up here but me, you know, when you talk about printing, we're thinking about printing on a piece of paper. And when you go see these 3D printers, you know that the world is really changing. Hats off to you and your school and to your principal there for, you know, bringing that type of technology to the school and teaching it to kids who you've got sitting around you right there. It's really, it's really heartwarming to see that happen. And, you know, I don't think anybody in Carson City would, would doubt that the Montessori School is one of our best schools in Carson City, and its students certainly are. So on behalf of all of us, we want to thank you for what you're doing. And to all you young folks there who are students out there, it is, you know, we look forward to you leading the country. I know you've already gotten a start at the legislature, but you're the future of our country. Do well, keep doing well, and make sure that our country keeps doing what we're doing, being the greatest nation on earth. So thank you very much. And Jessica, do you want to say anything?
Thank you.
Jessica? Anything? You don't have to. Anybody else? I. Yeah.
As you know, the reason we're here this morning is we really need your help with our special use permits and the ability to be able to transfer them between the sites. We are ready to open school at our current site. We have made an offer on the Silver State Building, and it has been accepted.
Where, where was that picture taken?
Um, down below in our 4th grade classroom.
Okay.
Today, students have harvested over 800 pounds of fresh produce from the garden, which is donated to fish.
Good morning, young man.
Thank you. My name is Hank Brown. Another partner is the Lodge Memory Care, where students and residents do projects together, like reading, writing, and cooking. They are following the Montessori-style curriculum to help treat meden- hm, dementia. This summer, the residents are attending to our hydroponic garden. They water, harvest, and use the produce. Carson Montessori sponsored a karma box, which will be filled with items to help those in need. Each class will take turns filling the box. Carson Montessori has a foam makers lab. With plasma printers and 3D printers, we build ourselves. We can print anything, even guitars. We have 3D pens, we make robots, rockets, we build and fly drones, we even make ice cream out of liquid nitrogen.
How do you do that?
Um, uh, well-
Very carefully, as the supervisor Monikowski says.
Well, you get all the ingredients, like the half and half milk, and the sugar, and then you can put any flavor, and then the liquid nitrogen makes it very cold and harden.
Very good, very good.
Sadie Brown. This year, Carson Montessori became part of the Enable Project. We manufact- we manufacture prosthetic hands for children around the world. Based on doctor specifications, this year, we sent 51 hands, one made by every student in upper elementary, and this is done at no cost to the child who receives it.
Show, show, show that a little bit, put that on TV a little bit, so we can see that there. Now, did you make that through 3D printing, or what'd you do?
Yeah, 3D printer. And then you put it together, then we send it to a university in New York, and they put all the hardware in it, and then send it off to the kids to use.
Good.
Our hard work hasn't gone unnoticed. Even the governor thinks we're pretty awesome. After extensive work, we earned the governor's official STEM designation, the only school in Carson City. Carson Montessori has always had a student legislative team. We've worked on significant bills that affect Nevada's education, many times at the request of legislators, such as Nevada Civics Law, Nevada's Financial Literacy Standards, state mandated testing, teacher licensure, and the ability for charter schools to bond. This year, we followed the legislative process from start to finish. We wrote a bill, partnered with Assemblywoman Sarah Peters, we lobbied it through the legislature, it passed unanimously, and it was signed into law on April 23rd, making Neon Nevada's official state element. AB 182, making Neon Nevada's state element garnered support from all sides, unified the state, had no cost, and we learned so much. Many of us now want to be legislator- legislators when we grow up. And these are just a few of the many positive contributions Carson Montessori has made to our community this year. Thank you for this opportunity to share.
There's some amazing stuff you folks are doing. That's really, uh, amazing's probably too soft to word, that's tremendous. Uh, you know, and some of us older folks here, not anybody else up here but me, you know, when you talk about printing, we're thinking about printing on a piece of paper, and when you go see these 3D printers, you know that the world is really changing, and hats off to you and your school, and to your principal there, uh, for, uh, you know, bringing that type of technology to the school and teaching it to kids who you've got sitting around you right there. Uh, it's really, it's really heartwarming to see that happen. And, uh, you know, I, I don't think anybody in Carson City would, would doubt that the Montessori School is one of our best schools in Carson City, and its students certainly are. Uh, so, on behalf of all of us, we want to thank you for what you're doing, and to all you young folks there who are students out there, uh, it, it, it is, uh, you know, we look forward to you leading the country. Uh, I know you've already gotten a start at, at the legislature, but you're the future of our country. Do well, keep doing well, and, uh, make sure that our country keeps doing what we're doing, being the greatest nation on earth. So, thank you very much, and Jessica, do you want to say anything?
Thank you.
Jessica, anything? You don't have to. Anybody else? I-
As you know, the reason we're here this morning is, we really need your help, um, our, with our special use permits, um, and the, uh, ability to be able to transfer them between, um, the sites. We are ready to open school at, uh, our current site. We have made an offer on the Silver State Building, and, um, it has been accepted. We are working on financing, even though we are one of the few schools in the state of Nevada that is in the black. We have a balanced budget in the black, our bottom line is in the black. It still is not enough for lending agencies, and bonding, even though our students worked on the bonding bill to make it available, uh, in the 2013 Legislative Session to charter schools, it is very tricky, too. And they all look at a cash flow coming in and address it as though you are a business. And of course, schools are, methods of financing are much different than if you have your own business. And so, it doesn't always make us a viable candidate, and it also, uh, can create a very high interest rate on the money they loan. The, we've been working diligently since Jan- January at, at your direction, that's what you wanted us to do, was to secure a site. And two offers, uh, were made where we would have been the leasie. They both were, um, didn't come to fruition, so we decided to purchase the building ourselves. We submitted an offer, and it has been accepted. Now, we're just working on financing. But, the special use permits, ours just expired to be able to use down below, and the one for Silver State is set to expire this month. And so, we're trying to coordinate it so that-
Say, say that again, Jessica, please.
Um, there's, because every school has to have a special use permit, if, if I'm correct, Mayor Crowe. And so, our special use permit for our classroom space, because we've so outgrown where we were, expired, just now, it just expired. The special use permit that's been issued to Silver State to offer as, to operate as a s- a school, an E occupancy, is set to expire this month.
What does that mean?
It, it means that, um, technically, I guess we can't locate there, and of course, we would have to go through that lengthy process of getting a special use permit approved. I don't want our school to end up homeless. We need to have a place to be able to, to operate, um, from. And so, there's this missing, to give you a really concrete example, uh, our charter was up for renewal, and we just renewed our charter, so we're good for another, uh, six years. Our charter expired on June 30th. This legislative session, and, and the, the maximum amount you could renew a charter for was six years. This session, they put a bill before the legislature, and you can now renew a charter for 10 years. Our charter expired on June 30th. That law went into effect one minute after midnight, July 1st, so we could only renew our charter for six years. That, we missed by one minute, because that makes a huge difference in getting financing, too. Huge difference, uh, with a charter school, they need to know how long your charter is good for, how long you're going to be, in essence, it's like an accreditation and a sponsorship. We're sponsored by the Carson City School District, we have a wonderful working relationship, uh, and, uh, they are full to capacity, so they would have nowhere to house our students. As you know, in the joint meetings, they're trying to secure more property, and they're running into the same issues that we are, uh, with the Capella Christian Site that they're trying to secure, so that we have more facilities to house the educational system of, of Carson City. Our, our enrollment is growing, uh, everywhere in Carson City, and we just need a place to be. And right now, we're just between those two.
Yeah, okay. Do you know, do you know when you might know whether you're gonna close on the Silver State, on the fair-
It, it's almost like any day, um, there, uh, John Uhart is our, uh, the representative Realtor for that property. He has our offer, um, he has the secured financing, we believe, and so, he's set to open the escrow account. So, I mean, it could be almost any-
Well, I think, Jessica, you know, we've all been looking at, you know, at the Montessori School, and, and, uh, we all are aware of, of how good that school is, and so, if you needed a testament to that effect, I think any one of us up here could do that.
Well, I appreciate that.
I don't know if it's gonna help a lender, I mean, because they'd probably say, you know, we want a little different analysis, but-
They look at that dollar sign.
Dollar sign. But I think, you know, we're willing to, I think, I, you know, I, I, I'm only one person, but I think on this one, I think speak for all of us, you know, we're, we're willing to try and help work it out, as long as we know, and I think we've said this before, as long as there's a plan to make it happen, uh, because you really do need new space, regardless of what's going on there, you need, you need a bigger space. Uh, so, I, I, so, I appreciate you coming forward this morning, let's keep us advised of what's going on here, okay?
Yes, I'll, I'll let, I'll let you know right away, you'll probably see a big yahoo from the north end of town, fireworks, uh-
Well, I don't know if you want to do that, but-
Yeah, I'm looking at Stacy as he's putting his head down.
You can have 3D printed fireworks, yeah. All right. All right. Uh, Board, you want to go down and get a picture with the students here, real quick? Can we do that? Let's go down to, can you come back-
Get those hands in there, that guitar.
All right. Boy, look at that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the one that actually plays, he's got it at home. He says-
Yeah, yeah. All right, let's get the kids in the middle. You guys come in here.
Yeah, you taking lessons to play with your child? Yeah.
Make sure we show that there. Who else is serving this one? There we are. All right.
Smile.
Smiling. Did you, young guys, did you guys smile?
You guys did pretty darn good.
Good job, good job, kids. Nice work, ladies. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, let's, uh, now take up, let me get it here, the consent agenda. Any member of the public want anything pulled from the consent agenda for individual discussion? Any member of the board? I don't see anybody, uh, so, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda, consisting of items 9A, 9B, and 10.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Carried. Okay. We'll be just kinda quiet here for a minute while everybody sneaks out. Thanks again, folks, for coming. Good parents, too. All right, let's take up item number, um, 12. This is for discussion only, this is a presentation and discussion regarding the reorganization, uh, of the Public Meetings and Public Records Division of the Office of Clerk Recorder, uh, by doing certain things. Aubrey, how are you this morning? You gonna do this?
I am, Mr. Mayor, thank you, although that's a very hard act to follow.
Yeah, it's a hard act to follow, but, you know, before you start, let me just say this, you know, you and I were talking before the board got started, uh, today about, you know, there's a lot of ru- stuff going around today about cyber attacks on, on election systems, and it's not lost on me, you know, that the, that the Carson City, uh, when we went to our new voting machines, was, was kind of the odd person out, in odd county out of 17 counties, Carson City stood out on its own, and now, uh, we are the only county, I think, in the state that has, uh, not just a paper ballot, but it's not connected to the internet, uh, when you make your vote. So, uh, there's probably still other ways that somebody who's gonna be creative can hack, but they're not gonna hack your vote coming in. I think that's a fair statement, right?
Um, actually, the other 16 counties, their voting equipment is not attached to the internet either.
Okay.
Um, but yes, Carson City's voting equipment is not.
But it's, but do they all have paper ballots?
They have what's called a, a verified paper ballot track, which is that roll of paper attached to the machine. So, it's different.
All right. Well, I always want you to be number one. You're number one in ARBU, so go ahead, tell us what you're doing.
Thank you, and thank you for that. Um, so, good morning. I just wanted to present to you this morning, there's gonna be a little bit of a change in personnel that you're gonna see here for the Board of Supervisors. As we all know, Kathy King, against many encouraging, um, discouraging words-
Get a little closer to the microphone, so people, there you go.
She has announced her retirement effective-
Wait a minute, what?
Not accepted.
Not accepted.
I tried, I really fought really hard, but yes, Kathy King, she announced her retirement effective September 26th.
September 26th, 2030?
2030.
2030? All right, that's good, we got it.
Um, so with that-
Plenty of time to plan.
Both Kathy and I kind of reevaluated the entire department as a whole. Um, as you know, the Clerk Recorder Department is, is fairly diverse, and with public records becoming more of a, a significant factor for the department, we took a look at what we currently had position-wise and budgeted-wise, and have decided to, if you'll notice, the, the current organization structure is, there's a Chief Deputy Clerk, who's an M13 position, and that's Kathy, and she currently oversees the entire department, so there's a Records Management Systems Officer, a T2 position, and a Counsel and Commission Reporter, a 4 position with three hourly, um, as well. So, what my reorganization would be is to keep the positions the, the same, except retitle the positions, so you'd still have your Chief Deputy Clerk, and that position would absorb the Records Management Systems Officer to handle more of the public records requests, um, and manage the reporting that's now required pursuant to the last Legislative Session. The Chief Deputy Clerk will still maintain management over the entire department, however, we've created, instead of the Records Management Systems Officer, we're gonna retitle that to be the Senior Public Meetings Clerk, and it'll remain as a T2 position. This is the position that will handle the administration of the, the board meetings, as well as share the other public and commission meetings with the now Public Meetings Clerk, formerly the Counsel and Commission Reporter. So, all of the positions are remaining the same, there's no budget, um, increase to these, and with the retirement of Kathy, there's actually gonna be a salary savings due to the, the realignment of the positions. So, that is what I'm looking to do, I'm not leaving, you're stuck with me for three years, but you'll have a different face up at the table to help you with the, the meetings.
This is for presentation only. Uh, any member of the board got questions? Go.
Yeah, I wasn't aware that you had announced your retirement. That's kind of a sad day for Carson City, so, uh, you, you will definitely be missed, and hopefully you have plans.
So, um, Aubrey, I just wanna thank you for really looking at your organizational structure and working together with Kathy to try and make it, um, better for the service for the public. So, I really appreciate that, and that you did it without, um, coming and asking for more money, but that you really worked with your team, that, that shows a lot, and I just wanna thank you for that. And Kathy.
Thank you.
Congratulations. This is better. Yeah, it really is.
Yeah, congratulations, this is better. We will miss you, but-
Yes.
You're not gone yet, so we'll-
Bug you a little while longer.
Yeah. All right, public comment on this issue? Anybody wanna weigh in? Nice job, Aubrey. Good job, Kathy. Okay. All right, let's take up item 13. Oh, 13A is pulled, 13B. Uh, this is discussion of possible action regarding contract 1920 dash 062, uh, for the FY20 Temporary Staffing Services through joint contracts with the state of Nevada, and there are a number of them. Carol, you wanna tell us what we're doing here?
Yeah, this is just the annual request for temporary, um, staffing services throughout the city. Um, it has gone down a bit again, so we're looking for a total of $1,250,000. Uh, last year, it was $1,700, so it's about $450 difference this year.
$4,000.
450,000, yeah, sorry. I'm like, yeah. Um, so it's just the annual request, so these are, um, budgeted items for various departments citywide.
Okay. I think we do this. This, is this the first time we've joined with the state on this?
No, 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 this one's, um, I know for about the last three years, as far as I've gone back, it's always been with the state, uh, through the state jointer contracts.
Sometimes these things get a little blurry in the history here, but, all right. All right, board members, questions on this one? Anybody? Public comment, anybody? Motion's in order, we wanna do a motion here.
I move to approve the contracts as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion's in order.
I just wanted to put on the record, um, Mr. Shirk earlier indicated that he thought that this item dealt with the procedures, it does not. This is simply the overlying contract that provides us the authority, so, just wanted to put that on the record, that's why we're not addressing his comments, is because his contract doesn't, doesn't, uh, meet that comment.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Carried. Thank you, Carol. All right. Let's take up, um, item 14. Uh, one member to the library board, who's doing this?
Daniele Noblet.
Good morning. How are you today?
Good morning, thank you for having me.
Thanks for applying, and thanks for wanting to help out your city and your library. Uh, we, I don't know if you've been through this process before, it's not a very difficult process. Uh, we each get to ask some questions, and we try and ask the same questions to all the applicants, so nobody gets a leg up on things. Um, and what I would like to add, to get you started, is, I, I know you've got an application, and we've all read that, but why don't you just tell us a little bit about you, and why you wanna do it? Why you wanna be on the library board, yeah?
Yes, sir. I, I, at the risk of, I think, being a little too long, as I've been a lifelong reader, I started reading at 3, my mother was also a reader-
Pull the microphone up a little closer to you there.
Oh.
Just pull it up. Just move it up.
Oh, there we go.
Sure, okay.
Uh, literacy was encouraged highly in my household, um, from a small age, I, you know, could read. I went with my mom to the library, and now, it was instilled in me the importance of a library. And as I got older, I realized, um, you know, through, uh, lessons in life and school, that public knowledge really is the center of civilization. Without it, uh, really, people wouldn't be able to, literally wouldn't be able to access much, at all. So, its stewardship is especially important. Um, to go back a little bit, um, I spent, I said I spent a lot of time in the library, I got to know my librarians, and when my mother went back to work, uh, that was basically my daycare. I stayed at the school library, and I either helped the librarians, or I read anything I needed to read until it closed. And, um, as a parent, I have been bringing my- And as a parent, I have been bringing my child here. I've been, I'm a single parent, and I had limited resources, and I was able to come and use the computer to look for jobs. I was able to look for resources as far as child development. When my daughter was diagnosed with autism, I was able to access real, concrete research about autism and how to help her at the best. And it's been very, it's been as successful as it can be. I've also, you know, typically just been able to browse and look at books. And my daughter loves it here. She loves the resources for children, and I think it's especially important that the Carson Library has been so progressive in engaging children, not just with the children's center where they can play with Legos and books and whatnot, but having the youth center, the digitarium. So it's encouraging children to come and use the library as their hub of entertainment and use of, you know, studying and socializing instead of being in front of a video game, being, you know, out and, you know, bored, not knowing what to do. So it's been especially important engaging children, and I would like to be a part of continuing that and then seeing where to go in the future and help as much as I can.
Very good. My question has been, I don't know, is, tell me what you think the future of public lib... In your opinion, what's the future of public libraries in the digital age? What's your opinion on, what's your thoughts on public libraries? Did I get yours? Well, maybe you don't have, maybe you can answer it once, and there are three of us gonna ask the same question, so give it a shot.
I think the future of libraries in the digital age is actually being able, like, going back is to access research. Research has been so unavailable to people prior to digital age. You can, I can come to the library, I can log in, and I can get white papers. I can get research that, you know, is typically in journals that aren't in, you know, your local bookshop or things like that, or things that would typically be expensive and inaccessible to others. And that would be part of it. And it would have to be readily available, like, people would have to know, this is what it is digitally. Would have to, digitally it also would create more of a space for youth as far as, because they're, they're not gonna be like any of us. You know, we grew up differently, so...
Sometimes hard for us to understand that, that they're not gonna be like us.
No.
I mean, they're growing up in a different world.
Absolutely.
It's a fascinating world to think about, but sometimes it's almost too big to grasp, in a sense. I mean, but you're absolutely right. They're growing up in a different world, so. I didn't mean to interrupt you there either, Daniel.
No, no worries. No, and they are, and so there's kind of a, there is a gap that's between us and them and trying to see what they're going to need. And they're going to need more as far as not only being able to function educationally and, you know, entertainment-wise digitally, but also with safety and understanding, you know, what they do. But, and then all of the new things, like the 3D printer, all of the things like that really bring something more to our library than just, than what people would just say, just books or just computers. We're bringing, you're bringing a new technology that's amazing to people and that they need to know, they're gonna need to learn in the future for jobs or simply to use in their everyday life at some point.
Very good. Well said, Daniel. Okay. I probably took a couple people's questions here. Is everybody ready to go? Stacy, you wanna go first, and then we'll just go this way?
Fortunately, you didn't take mine.
Okay, good.
Daniel, one of your duties as trustee is to set a point and evaluate the professional performance of the library director. So I'd like you to tell me what you think are the three most important qualities our library director should have, and how you'd go about evaluating those.
I think one of the qualities I would consider is, oddly enough, it might compassion, because compassion also leads, it leads to caring about what they're doing, what they are doing, how they are doing it. And second, taking account into what's going on, looking at everyday activities, users, talking to the librarians and the assistants, and seeing what's going on and if, what the problems there are, what good things are going on. Third, attendance, showing up. Those would be my three.
Good morning, Daniel.
Good morning.
Can you walk me through how you would analyze the allocation of resources between the recreational side of the library, so novels, and the professional services side of the library, which would be research, job search and resumes, things of that nature? So you have a limited amount of resources. How do you balance that and determine, this is how much we're gonna spend on the recreational side? This is how much we're gonna spend on the workforce training or other professional services side?
I think as far as allocation, and as far as this being my first go at this, I would analyze first what we have in either area and see what we need in either area, and kind of evaluates, do we need more, do we have a, are we up to date on our fictional novels or, you know, autobiographies, things like that? Is that, how many things are new or need to be done? Professional side, what professional things do we need in the community? What's being attended and not being attended? What people have asked for? And then see from there if they could be, you know, how to split it? Because surely it would mean to be split, you know, I wouldn't go, I would think it probably wouldn't go one way or another. And that's a very vague answer, and I apologize.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for applying. Can you give me one goal you have that you hope to achieve if you're selected for the position? And then how would you work to try and accomplish this goal?
My goal would be to, well, first would be to try to keep the library going as well as it is. But also, actually, my goal would be to try to expand the resource for people to understand what is actually available at the library, because there is so much more available than people really tend to use. And so, you know, this is how you access a white paper. This is how you access this. This is how you access this. Because so, there's so much that you can do, and it's awesome. And then from the parent's standpoint, I see that, like I've said before, that there are amazing opportunities for our youth here. And keeping up to date on what's appropriate and what can really, what our youth can accomplish here and what we can provide.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed in your background that you had some business courses in college and that you have worked in social media as well. How would you employ that to help out? You're, I'm sure, aware that we, through the library, also run the hub over here, and we're gonna talk about that later with the N-NDA helping us do that. But what would you contribute in that regard? It's sort of like Brad's question on, how do you feel the resources at the library and at the hub should be taken into account?
I think social media is, from what I see when I look on events and click on, it doesn't seem like a whole, it seems like a fair amount of people look at it, but I think it does need to be larger in a sense, because people, that is the way to reach people now, basically. Even if you wanna reach a lot of people, you go on social media. But I do, to address the second with the business courses, I did take international business in college. And I understand how, while this is not a business or just a part of our public knowledge or humanitarian, it's both, and it needs to function as both. So I think I can employ both well, because I have that side that truly loves the library and understands why it's important. And I understand that, how a business works. It's not, you know, fairy dust isn't gonna pay anything. It's money. And it needs to be allocated in such a way that things are efficient.
Thank you. Daniel, anything you wanna add? Anything at all? There are no right or wrong answers in these things, so, you know, feel free to, if you wanna add something, go for it. If you don't have to, but...
I just wanna say that I'm excited for the opportunity, and thank you for having me into the interview. And I know whoever you pick is gonna be great, so, but thank you, and I appreciate it. So I hope you have a great morning.
As Sue Farzad Bagwell said, thank you very much for applying, and thanks for wanting to make sure that your community is well-served by its library. And thanks for being a good community citizen for us all. I think speak for all of us up here on that. So you're welcome to sit and listen. You don't have to go back outside now. You can sit and listen to the others, and then we'll see what Solomon has to say about the decision.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Is it Margaret? Is that correct?
Julie.
Huh?
This is Julie.
Julie, okay. I got it. All right.
Does green mean it's on? It's on. All right.
There you go. All right. Just put your name on the record there, Julie, for the, so we all know, to get the notes done right.
My name's Julie Balderson. That's B-A-L-D-E-R-S-O-N.
Okay. Julie, we ask all the same, try to ask all the same questions of all the applicants, so that nobody gets a leg up on it. And I'll start by just saying, you know, tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, and why you wanted to serve on the library board, just to get, you know, get used to speaking here. And there are no right or wrong answers. So don't hesitate to say what you wanna say, and just be relaxed about it. Go ahead.
All right, well, I'm Julie. I'm from Carson City, born and raised. Went to WNC, went to UNR. Right now, I work at the Division of Welfare and Supportive Services for the state of Nevada. I'm their public information officer. As far as my personal interest in serving on the library board, because I am a government worker...
I didn't hear that. Because you're what?
Because I am a government worker, I'm a bureaucrat, you know. We value civic engagement, especially where I work. When we, when we hold hearings, when we want public input, when we're trying to solicit feedback from people who are affected by our policies, it's so disheartening to see that lack of engagement. You try to, you know, maybe we'll do the meeting at night. Maybe we'll do it on a weekend. Maybe we'll get more people to come in. We'll throw it on social media. And it's still not always very encouraging. So I need to follow my own advice and be more engaged in my community. So of course, I think working at the city level is probably my best bet, so I can avoid a conflict of interest working as a state worker. I loved the library as a kid. I had my little blue, it used to be a blue card with white lettering on it. I remember there used to be the espresso yourself there when I was in middle school. Used to go. Lots of good memories. And then I kinda pulled away from visiting the library for a while. Then recently, I had my first child. She's just turned a year last week. And before she was even a year old, I made it a point for my husband and I to go and get her card at the library, too. So when I saw there was a vacancy...
She's reading by three. She's reading by one.
Oh, jeez. I don't know about that. Maybe if we get her in the Montessori program. But that's just a little bit about me.
Very good. So the question I have, just to kind of follow up on things, is, you know, the world is changing in the sense, becoming more digital. So the question I have is, what's your vision for, or what do you think is gonna happen? Or let me put it this way, what do you think the role of public libraries are gonna be in the upcoming world of more access by digital to research materials? What do you think the role of the libraries should be?
Well, I think it's vital that the library remain a hub, as libraries have always traditionally been, to go and gain knowledge and information. It's just perhaps that the conduit has changed. It's not so much your books and reference desk materials, if it's more digital. That's great, you know. I know that the library is already using the Libby or Overdrive app, which allows greater access for folks who, maybe they can't make it all the way into the library, but if they've got some type of device, and most people do have a smartphone or tablet, even with basic plans, you can, you can access great material that way. The other excellent expansion is it's not always printed material, right? So you don't have to be necessarily literate or fluent in English. You can use some of that technology to engage more broadly with the information, whatever, whatever it is you're looking for. So I think as far as the library's role is concerned, you wanna make sure that you're strengthening those roots. There's always gonna be a need for libraries, especially for folks. I know I said I work at welfare. There's folks who are trying to get back on their feet. The library provides tremendous resources between internet access and job coaching, even simple, here's how you fill out an application, because most are online now. It's vital.
Very good. Okay. We'll do the same thing. Stacy, you ready to go again?
Yes, absolutely. Thanks, Julie, for applying and putting yourself out there. One of the duties of trustee is to appoint, evaluate, and appoint and evaluate the performance of the library director. So I'd like you to tell me what you think are the three most important things, or the three most important qualities our library director should have, and how you will evaluate those things.
So I'd say, first and foremost, you have to see someone who has a passion for what they're doing, especially in government world. And in a role as critical as a director, you need to see that they're gonna lead by example, that they're excited about what they do every day. And I think that evaluating that trait is evident in the work they do. Are they phoning it in? Are they making every, making every appointment, but maybe not going above and beyond? Because we certainly would expect that for a director position. So that would be the first. I think the second would be an ability to, I don't wanna say seen to the future, but at least have some forward vision. So we're not so tied down in the day-to-day. While it's important to keep things running, you have to make sure that you're moving pieces, like chess, right? You're moving pieces strategically. So that's something you can, I would look for. And again, that's usually easy to evaluate in terms of demonstrated ability over time. So if we're looking at decisions over the period of, say, a year, right? If you're doing an annual review, you can take decision point by decision point and ask, you know, what fed into that decision? And usually, the answer is there. I was thinking long-term, I was thinking short-term, medium-term. However, they answer your question there. And the third thing's kindness. This is something that's pretty easy to evaluate, right? Are you keeping your staff? Do they have good things to say about you? Are you putting people at ease when they talk to you? Kindness is so, so important, and it's something that you don't necessarily train people to do. They have it. It's there. And that ability to connect through compassion is something that you need to see in a leader. And it's also something that keeps your whole, the whole system connected, you know. I don't wanna talk to somebody who's grumpy. If I am making an ask of someone, I'm not, I'm not gonna do it. So that's, that's my top three.
Brad?
Good morning, Julie.
Good morning, Julie. My question for you is, tell me how you would analyze and allocate available resources between the recreational side of the library, recreational readings, so novels, and the professional services side, so job searching, workforce development, things of that nature?
So I'd look for a needs assessment somewhere, and this could be as simple as historical information. You want to see where the traffic is, right? So as folks are coming in, you can look at what they're checking out and what business they're conducting at the library. You don't want it to be so lopsided, that you don't have balance. But if you can see that you've exhausted some resources in one area more than the other, then you'd probably want to expand in that area, is my guess. So as far as analysis, I think past utilization might be your best bet.
Lauren?
Good morning, and thank you so much for applying. What is one goal you hope to achieve if you're selected for the position? And how will you work to accomplish this goal?
Well, I think the goal for the library is to, in some ways, almost be that backbone of the community, right? Bringing folks together. I think one way we can do that is by making sure that we've routed folks where they need whatever it was they were looking for. So in some cases, it might not be that they were looking for library services, but building those connections between other agencies within the community is so, so beneficial. So for example, if we're looking at employment, library can get you internet access, can help you apply for jobs. But at the end of the day, the library is not necessarily going to employ you, right? So we need those partnerships with employers. So that's one example. But I would look to, in strengthening those partnerships within the community. It's not all about the library, it's all of us.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is sort of a riff on Supervisor Bonkowski and Mayor Carles. The library has under its umbrella the Adams Hub, which is a business on computer and et cetera. And we're going to be dealing with that soon in regards to Northern Nevada Development Authority taking over some of the stuff that's done there. But how would you, as a Library Board of Trustees member, view the allocation, again, of resources between the library proper and the Adams Hub and balance that act?
Well, it sounds like a negotiation, what the hub's available resources are and how they best fit in with what our resources are. So it's not always money or staff. It could be physical space. So I think when it comes to balancing those resources, you have to put everybody's best interest first and where you have overlap. There's lots of areas where you can negotiate, I think. Speaking for myself at Welfare and Supportive Services, we've recently started an initiative where we're putting our workers in community-based locations, hospitals, some libraries in the state actually, jails. And we can't offer anything but that person and what that person does, right? We can't help pay rent, we can't do anything that way. But the benefit of our staff being there is, is worth it to our partners. So anywhere where there's an opportunity to explore maybe less tangible resources, but obviously where there's a gain to be made, I think you have to look at it and consider it seriously.
Julie, anything you want to add?
I don't. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you for applying and thanks for getting your child a library card at age one. I don't think anybody's ever going to forget that one. It's pretty cute stuff. It's good. So you're welcome, you're welcome to listen to the rest of the interviews here, or you don't have to if you don't want to. But you're welcome to do so. And thanks again for applying and wanting to be a productive member. You already are a productive member of our community, but thanks for stepping up even more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you today?
I'm great.
All right, just put your name on the record so we know that we get it picked up for the minutes. Go ahead.
My name is Ananda Campbell.
Hi, Ananda. How are you today? How are you? You just leave it on, that's fine.
Oh, okay. I'm back.
You're back. Ananda, we asked the same questions of all applicants, so that nobody gets a leg up on it. And so the first question to give you, to get you started, let me just preface this by saying there are no right or wrong answers in this. You know, we just want to know who you are and what you think about, you know, the position you're applying for. So let me just give you an opportunity to talk about yourself and why you want to be on the board, the library board.
Well, as I said, my name is Ananda Campbell, and I work for Carson City School District. I'm the Library Media Coordinator for the district and the Carson High Librarian. So obviously, I have a love for libraries and literacy and all that libraries are. And I have a vision of what they should be and could be. I have been lucky enough to work closely with the Carson City Library in my capacity with the school district. I work as a liaison with their educational programs, and I work very closely with the Digitarium and the Teen Engagement and Teen Leadership Council. So I'm very involved there. So that's the, the one aspect of it. The other aspect is just my involvement as a community member. I'm a mom, and I grew up in this community. So I grew up going to Carson City Library and going to their children's time when I was young, their reading times, and which ironically, they, they just moved the children's area back to where it was when I was little. And they have this great pit that we used to sit in. And so I grew up there at the library. And then when I had kids myself, I started bringing them when they were just infants. It was a nice, cool place to be in the summer. And as a mom of twin babies, I just needed to corral them somehow. So we spent a lot of time at the library. And I love that it's the center of the community and that it's welcoming to everybody. And I'd like to continue to be a part of its vision moving forward.
What's your vision on more public libraries? And you might expand that to be the school libraries. What's your vision for library services in general as the world changes into more of a digital world?
Library services in general? I, I like to say that anything you need, you can find at the library. Because as a librarian myself, I may not have it, I may not have the answer, but I know where to go to find it. I'm all about finding resources and making connections with people. So of course, at the school library, I'm focused, our patrons are focused, the students and staff and community who comes in. Whereas the public library definitely, you know, has a larger focus. I did my intern, my library internship at the public library, and it was a real eye-opener to me. There were areas that I, I didn't know existed with the need, with, you know, the patrons who maybe have challenges with socioeconomic or homeless or mental health. And the library is an open space and it welcomes everybody. And so that really puts into focus the, the idea of resources and making connections and making people feel comfortable, all people. But you do have to be aware of safety and, you know, forward-thinking with how can you provide services for everybody, whether it's the young mom or, you know, people just needing a safe place to be, you know, as the, as the sun goes down as well. I'm sorry.
That's okay. As I said, you're doing fine. You're doing fine. Don't worry about it. Okay. Let me, let me ask you one last question. Do you have a, on your application, you note that you have an endorsement for library services on your, on your master's? Is that correct?
Correct. I have a, the Library Media Specialist Master's endorsement. Because I'm a certified teacher, in order to be a librarian in Nevada, a certified librarian, you have to have a teaching certificate and then a master's in library science. So that's...
Okay. Thank you. Stacy?
Ananda, thank you. Thanks for putting yourself out there. I appreciate it. One of your duties as trustee is to set a point and evaluate the professional performance of the library director. So I'm interested in your thoughts on what you think the three most important qualities our library director should have are, and how you'd go about evaluating those.
I know that right now, the Carson City Library is going through a plan, they're building their strategic plan. And they're putting together their vision for where the library wants to move forward. I'm familiar with this because as part of the school, they hired a contractor to come in and, and speak to different partners, community partners, and I was the educational group that put in, put information with that. So of course, I think that number one is you have to be very familiar what, with what the strategic plan is. And anything that you put into place has to fall within that strategic plan. So any expectations I would have, number one, come from the plan that the library board and the Board of Supervisors have put together. As far as personality, I think you definitely have to have positive leadership skills. You need to be able to be someone who can inspire people and encourage people to work together to problem solve. Definitely a mind for budgeting and working within, being creative to work within the parameters that you're given. And forward-thinking, you really have to know what the current trends are and where the community is growing and moving towards so that you can build a space that meets the needs of the community in general.
Brad?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My question for you is, please tell us how you would analyze and allocate resources between the recreational side of the library, novels for recreational reading, and the professional services side of the library? So workforce development, job search, other professional services that they may provide?
I know that over the last few years, the Carson City Library has put a tremendous amount of resources towards specifically workforce development and bringing in partnerships from training and universities and everything from hands-on, you know, 3D printing to career services. And I believe that that direction has really stemmed from, you know, having a really clear vision and plan of where you want to go and what the community needs were. And there, in this community, I mean, definitely workforce development and, and training is a need. So I appreciate that the director at that time, Sina Lloyd, really saw that, and she pushed resources in that area. I think that's when you need to look at the direction and leadership from the library director, because I expect that that person would have done the research and presents a plan of where the direction of the library should go. So even though you put resources in one area, you still have to be looking at growth in other areas as well, from, you know, like I said, the children's, to the teens, to the adults, to career support.
Thank you. Lauren?
Good morning, and thank you so much for applying.
Thank you.
What is one goal you hope to achieve if you're selected? And how will you work to accomplish this goal?
My goal in general for libraries is, libraries are for everyone. And the library is a safe space where everyone is heard and acknowledged, and everybody who comes into the library needs to know that they matter and they're seen. We have so many people who maybe feel like they're underrepresented, and I think the library needs to work to create a space that is welcoming for everybody.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is sort of a riff on Supervisor Bonkowski and the mayors. We in this community now have sort of a two-headed library. We have the library proper and, and the Adams Hub, which does the kinds of things that help with career development or entrepreneurship. How do you allocate the resources of the library, which are limited, obviously? All of our government resources are somewhat limited, to take account of those two differing, or somewhat differing charges?
I have to, I'm, I'm very familiar with Adams Hub. I've been involved with the, you know, years ago, when, when they were trying to build a new space that had it all incorporated together. And unfortunately, that didn't happen. But that's when you, we had great leaders at the time who thought, okay, well, given the parameters, this is what I have. We're going to problem solve. We're not giving up. We're just going to change to still meet the needs, but in a different way than we thought. As far as allocating resources, it would be difficult for me to make a specific numeric judgment call right now, because I am not aware of what those numbers are. And I would have to do the research, and I would also have to, you know, listen to what the leader, the library director, and see. I would expect the library director to present information that I could then make a decision on based on the information that I have and representing the groups that I would specifically be representing, which is both education, which is very closely related to workforce development, and as a community member and as a mother of children in the library. So any decision I make would have to come from the information that I'm given at the time and keeping in mind the people that I represent and what best meets the needs of the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So what, what did you think about that?
It's not so bad.
Not so bad. Okay.
I'm a talker.
Any comments you want to make to clean up, to add to what we've said, what you've said, or anything, any concluding comments about anything? Go ahead.
I would just like you to know that I, I see we have four applicants today, which just warms my heart. I think that's fantastic, that we have four people who want to step up and be a part of our community in that way. And if my background and experience is found to be something that would be beneficial to the Carson City Library and, you know, its vision moving forward, you know, I'd be humbled to serve and I'd be happy to do so. And if it's found that somebody else has, you know, a better fit for it, I'm still a part of the library community in the schools, and I'm still going to be a part of the library community for Carson City. So either way, I'm happy to be involved and an advocate for libraries and literacy. And libraries are for everyone. So I have a space there either way.
You have a what there?
I have a space that I'll be participating with the library either way. So thank you.
Those are good concluding remarks, and it's very helpful for us, because as I said, you know, a little bit here, Solomon's going to have to make a decision, and we have four very good applicants. And your, your comment, you know, about the quality of the applicants we've got is heartwarming. So thank you, Ananda, very much. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome to sit and listen as we go forward. And here, you don't have to go back outside unless you, or you can go back to work, whatever you want to do.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right. Is it Margaret?
Yeah, I'm Margaret.
How are you today?
I'm wonderful. Thank you and yourself.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Board of Supervisors. My name is Margaret Smith.
Can you turn your mic on, Margaret?
Oh.
There you go. Push there. Just leave it on. There you go, Margaret.
Good morning. I'm Margaret Smith.
How are you doing today?
I'm well, thank you.
So you're native Nevada, where you're born?
I'm actually born in Carson City, Nevada.
All right, we're done. You're hired, okay?
I'm a fifth generation, native Nevadaan.
Very good. Very good. Okay. We asked all the same, Margaret, we asked the same questions of all the applicants. And as the prior applicant said, we have four very qualified applicants, and so these are difficult decisions for us. And I usually start off by giving you a chance to warm up and talk a little bit. So the question I have for you as the start is, just tell us a little bit about yourself. I know you're a fifth generation... I know you're a fifth generation Nevada, born in Carson City, speaks highly of you. You know, just tell us a little bit more about yourself and why you want to be on the library board and go from there.
Okay, thank you. So my name's Margaret Smith, I'm 35 years old, I'm Korean-American. My mother and my father, they had me here 35 years ago, and then they got divorced and mother moved to Texas, and that's actually where I went to school. And I spent my summers here in Carson City, Nevada, so I've seen all the changes for decades. I moved back as an adult about seven years ago to take care of my father. He was at the end stage of COPD, and at that point, I decided to live with him and be his full-time caregiver. During that time, and I was making the transition of being a caregiver, I had to think of new ways to keep my father engaged and busy other than watching TV or movies. And he had a passion for reading, so I began to go to the library every week and pick up, pick up 20 books for him to read. And he would fly by these books, maybe read one or two within a few days. And I saw his life really change at that point when he was homebound on oxygen. His mind was able to be engaged and interested in new things that he wasn't able to explore anymore in his active life. So several years ago, after he passed away, I started working full-time for a publishing company here in Carson City, Nevada. We're called The Change Companies, and we make evidence-based cognitive behavioral curriculum for behavior change. So we make workbooks or journals to help individuals restructure their thinking, whether it's criminal thinking or addictive thinking. And our mission there is to put resources in the hands of individuals to make life changes. And I have seen over the past three years, just a passion to help people engage in finding materials that help them become lifelong learners, not just going through programming, if you will. And so I also want to serve here on the board now, because I see that I can contribute back to Carson City in engaging the community, especially with individuals who may not be able to read or write as well. I've overcome dyslexia in my life. It wasn't until I graduated from SMU, the Bachelor of Science in Economics and Finance, that I'd learned, all my life, I actually had a learning disability. Because, because I wasn't able to read and write as well through school, I found ways to get around that. And I always had a curiosity to learn, and I think there's a lot of people in our community who may have their own challenges, may even hide those challenges, but know that there is a way that they still want to learn. They're very talented in other areas, maybe with arts and crafts or being a musician. And I think that the library is the hub or the anchor to foster learning. It doesn't necessarily have to be only through books, but it can be a conduit to cultivating an environment to learn. So I recognize that I'm a young individual who wants to give back to my community now and looking to serve.
I think we're all aware of The Change Company up here, and it does some tremendous things for Carson City. Let me ask you a question that I have, and it probably goes to, because The Change Company, I think, does a lot of printed media, printed documents when they're, and it's, and it's business. What's your vision for the future of libraries per se? And you might talk about, you know, is, is the digital world changing for the Change Company as well? I mean, want to get your feel for what's happening to, to information transfer in the new, in an age of AI, for lack of a better word, or digital? Just talk a little bit about that if you could.
Sure. That's a great question. It's a common question I get quite a bit when I'm consulting with programs, is, are you going to stop publishing journals or books, because everybody's moving towards iPhones and tablets and the electronic version? And based on research, journaling or actually having something tangible is not the same as electronic version. Specifically in the work that I do with behavior change, science shows that when you put pen to paper, that's actually what restructures the processes of your mind versus using an electronic version's only prefrontal cortex, which is emotions, just motor skills for typing. But I see this also with books in general. There's really different learning modalities, auditory, visual, and kinesthetic. And for kinesthetic people, they want to touch something and be able to engage in it. Same thing with maybe highlighting or writing in a book. They're going to remember information more when they engage in it, whereas sometimes with an electronic version, you may be able to read it, but you're not going to remember it. And this happens to me all the time. I love reading on my phone. I can read something I'm passionate about, and then next week, I'll totally forget what I, what I read. But if I highlight it in my book, or if I take notes, there's something that sticks to me that I can recall and I can remember, I can go back and reference. In the work that I do with behavior change, we know that when people write their story, they take ownership of that, they want to remember, and they can remember the things that they actually wrote. And so there's just a different level of engagement when you have an electronic version versus a real book. Now, that doesn't mean there's no room for electronic version. I think with a library, we do need to be innovative in engaging individuals in electronics through different modalities. I think that's still very important. And there's always going to be a need for books, regardless. There's nothing that's ever going to replace books. And I think with this day and age, we're more cautious about maybe not printing as much. I think people are finding that they may be able to read on eBooks or computers, but still, at the end of the day, for individuals who are not tech savvy, or like my father, who couldn't go to the library, a book is going to allow them to still have that freedom to explore in their mind, and it's still going to serve in a way that nothing else can.
Very good, very good. Stacy, wow.
Thank you, Margaret, and thank you for applying and putting yourself out there. One of your duties as a library trustee is to set a point and evaluate the professional performance of the library director. So I'd like you to tell me what you think are the three most important qualities our library director should have and how you'll go about evaluating those qualities.
In terms of qualities for a director, to me, it's what makes a great leader. And one of the most important characteristics of a director or leader is somebody who's transparent and they have honesty. And so in terms of what that may look like is, when they do make plans or commitments to do something, are they following through with those, those actions? And being transparent in terms of allowing people to see what they're thinking, even if it's giving pushback in any, any respect, that they still are open and communicate well with others. I also think a good leader is somebody who can collaborate with a group of people, engage partnerships, engage the community at all levels. The library is a unique place, as it's an anchor or a hub for all generations. And there's not a lot of places that engage every age group like the library does. And so I think this leader needs to be open-minded in terms of how do we build collaboration in the community for funding, new programs, innovative ideas. And then also, I think that a good director is somebody who has the initiative to take action. So not only talk about what they want to do, but take steps to do that, to empower individuals, to head projects up and to follow through with them. And then in terms of how do we evaluate this, to see, do they really follow through in their actions? And I think that would be, you know, having the evaluations, having the conversations, and then seeing what they get done within that timeframe.
Brad, go.
Good morning, Margaret.
Good morning.
My question for you is, if you could tell us how you would analyze and allocate resources between the recreational side of the library and the professional services side of the library? So for instance, workforce development, job search versus recreational novels?
In terms of how to determine that, I think we need to first identify what are the needs with the recreational side versus professional development side? And then, based on the needs, then we can allocate the funds based on the budget and looking, are, are we allocating the funds in the right places? Does this make enough sense to continue this? And it would be in terms of making strategic choices based on our mission and our goal, and where do we want to be in five years or 10 years? And those decisions come from today. And can the decisions that we're making going to lead us to those places or programs that we want to get to? So it's about seeing the big picture and making those small choices now and seeing the impact that it's going to have down the road.
Good morning. Good morning, and thank you so much for applying. What is one goal you hope to achieve if you're selected, and how will you work to accomplish this goal?
My one goal, if I'm appointed, is to get more people to become engaged in the community at the library, not, not just seeing the library as a place where you can get books, but to be a learning hub. So be in a place where people can build capacity, to offer different avenues for people to come in and learn. So whether it's new, like festivals or workshops, it's just an area that people can come and explore. So I know that sometimes young moms are looking for things for their children to do, so if we offer more things to bring the children in, I think that's fantastic. So it's an area that we can foster communication. I'd also like to see a bigger room for meetings, so people can share their thoughts and ideas. The room that's in there now, I think, holds about 10 people. So it's not a really big space that people can come together and gather. I think this would be a really great opportunity for the library to expand, to open up communication, idea forums, and so forth.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to deviate from script a little bit, because I want to ask a question that hasn't been the question, but it relates to you particularly. You majored in finance and, at SMU, and now you work for The Change Company. Many people who major in what you majored in are in Wall Street or someplace, well, why didn't you follow that career or?
Sure, good question, so.
Just briefly.
Yes.
Because it's not, it's not, it's questioned directly at you to.
That's right. My, my degree is in economics and finance. I studied money and banking with some of the top professors in the world, who used to consult with the Federal Bank and Al Bernanke, and I learned how money works. And when I studied that degree, it was never my intention to be an economist. At that time, I was in banking, I worked for Bank of America, and understood finances in a way that now still serves me to this day. And actually, how I apply my degree to the work that I do in behavior change is being able to help programs and businesses make fiscal decisions based on their missions and their goals.
Thank you. You've answered the question, and I, I just, it, other people go a different direction after they take that major. The question that I've been asking everybody is, relates to the library and the hub. The Adams Hub, of course, is a business entrepreneur and workforce, et cetera. How do you allocate the resources between the two things? There's a little bit of a riff on the question of Supervisor Bonkowski and the mayor, for that matter, for the digital things.
Sure. So again, I think there needs to be an assessment in terms of what are the needs and reviewing what are the priorities in terms of looking at what, what's being done in each location, and then looking at the long-term goals and deciding where, where does it fiscally make sense to allocate these resources? And is it going to serve our end goal? And taking those steps there. So again, it's based on assess, assessing the needs.
Margaret, anything you want to add to why you want to apply or follow up on any of the questions you were asked or anything?
No, I don't have any questions, but I do thank you for your time this morning and this opportunity, so thank you.
Well, we're tremendously pleased that you want to be a productive member, you are a productive member of our community, you want to even be getting more involved, and we thank you for making the application today. And following up on what my good friend John said, you know, I have a degree in economics with labor law, as a minor on it. Look where I ended up. I'm not certain it's a good place, but, all right, very good, all right. You're welcome to sit and listen to our discussion here. All right, board, this doesn't get any easier as we, these don't, these don't get any easier at all. So frankly, I'm not certain exactly where we want to start. Brad, do you want to?
I'll start, I'll just throw it out there. I think in the seven years that I've been sitting here, this is the most competitive set of interviews that I've, that I've heard. So I literally have seven percentage points between all four candidates and two percentage points between the top three. So my first vote is going to go to Julie, followed one point back by Margaret, if we get to that point. Anybody else want to start?
Yeah, I'll go, and I agree, I echo what Supervisor Bonkowski said, this is a great field. I'm very impressed with all of you. I'm going to go with Margaret, the last one we've heard from.
I'll throw my two cents worth in. I, you know, the thing that I'm most impressed by is every single one of these people had a deep family connection to the library, and it's impressive to me. I, I would go with Julie and then Margaret.
So, you know, I, I do, I want to start with thanking each and every one of you for applying. Kudos. I mean, we cannot go wrong with any of you. What I'm using to make my final decision is to truly figure out which one's going to fit with the strategic plan and what the current makeup of the board. So I kind of look for gaps or issues that I think someone can bring to the table to help the board move the whole vision forward. And so that is kind of where the final deciding little piece for me is, because I thought I could pick any of you. And so I have to look at what's going to delineate the difference for me. And so I thought that Julie had a few responses that just honed that skill set a little bit more for me. So I'm going to go with Julie.
That makes you irrelevant, sorry.
I don't mind being irrelevant.
It's fun to make the mayor irrelevant.
I don't mind being irrelevant. It's a good deal, man, that's all right. Well, I, I kind of had it scored the other way. I had it with Margaret and then Julie, but I will go with Julie. I mean, I thought, you know, I was particularly interested in the vision statement that they had. And, you know, frankly, I learned a whole lot this morning by listening to some, some of the answers here about, you know, where we're going to go in this world, about in learning and, and library services as part of that learning. But I would, not only am I just not irrelevant, but I'll throw my vote for Julie as well, so we'll make that unanimous.
Can I say something? I'd like all these people to continue being involved in the community and come and apply for other things if you have other interests besides the library, or keep involved. Thank you.
Yeah, go.
Yeah, and, and I'd also like to say that I meant that when I said that this is the most competitive set of interviews that I've heard in seven years, and that any one of the four of you would be a great choice, but unfortunately, we only get to pick one.
Yeah, they all said it better than I did. Okay, we'll entertain a motion to appoint Margaret Smith, no, Julie. That's a Freudian slip, that's a Freudian slip. Julie to the library board.
I move to appoint Julie Balderson to fill a four-year term expiring June 20th, '23 to the Carson City Library Board.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Here you can see none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Let's see here if I got it here. Okay. We're going to take a break here in a minute. Is Julie still here?
No, she went to her board.
All right.
I will.
Very good. Okay. We'll.
to the Carson City Library Board.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Here you can see none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, is nay? Let's see here if I got it here. Okay. We're going to take a break here in a minute. Is Julie still here?
No.
All right.
I will.
Very good. Okay, okay, board. Let's take 10 minutes and take a break. So we'll be in recess for 10 minutes.[598.54]
Back to order, we're now on item number fifteen. This is for possible action. This is discussion of possible action regarding a joint operating room between Carson City Library, Carson City, Northern Nevada Development Authority and the Adams Hub, through which the library will pay N N D A $60,000 annually from funds provided to the library from Hop May Adams Foundation for the creation and operation of a business retention and expansion program. We have the library director here, Diane, and esteemed lawyer, Todd. You know, here you do water law, now all of a sudden you're in library stuff, huh?
And we appreciate every bit.
Sometimes I hop back and forth too much, I think.
He's blushing. That's good, you're a good lawyer, man. All right, who's gonna start? Diane, or Todd?
Yeah, I will start on what we're bringing for you is an agreement, and this was to take care of part of the responsibility that we have under the donation from the Hop and May Adams Foundation, partly to operate, run the hub, the entrepreneur and education programs at the hub. The second part was for under economic development, business retention, and business development. And in the review of the operations, we were looking for a unique situation, or a unique approach to be able to effectively reach the businesses that are in our community and surrounding area in order to help sustain and improve their position in the community and with business. And that's where we were looking for the connection with the Northern Nevada Development Authority.
What did your board have to say about it?
We had this at our board in their June meeting. They had reviewed it and support the endeavor.
Brad, you wanna jump in now? You wanna jump in? Wait, I was gonna ask Todd to give us a rundown of the agreement, but you jump in now if you want.
We can wait till Todd's done.
Pardon me?
We can wait till Todd's done.
Okay, go ahead. All right.
Okay, just very, very, very briefly, as to this agreement itself, I should state for the record, this is Todd Reese, Deputy District Attorney. As to the agreement itself, it, the, it's to fulfill some of the conditions of the donation from the Hop and May Adams Foundation. Under that donation, there was a requirement that the library funded two positions at the hub, one of them being kind of an outbound person to go out and see what businesses were requiring and try to fulfill those requirements, or at least hook them up with the resources that are available so that they could succeed. To effectuate that, N N D A and the Adams Hub and the library agreed that N N D A would provide a position to do that. In exchange, the library would pay N N D A $6,000 annually, and, oh, sorry, $60,000 annually, and the, from the funds provided to the library from the Hop and May Adams Foundation. And in a separate agreement, N N D A would be leasing space from the Adams Hub, and their rent to the Adams Hub would come back to the library and then would be used by the library to provide programming at the Adams Hub.
All right. Brad, jump in.
All right, I've read the agreement, the original agreement with the foundation and the library. I don't really have any objections to N N D A doing the business retention and expansion program. It just seems to me that this would be a whole lot simpler if we just let the two parties deal directly with one another, with N N D A and the Adams Hub deal directly, and then we could modify the original agreement between the foundation and the library and the city to reduce the donation amount from 200,000 to 140,000, which then frees up to $60,000 for the N N D A contract. I think that we're just creating a more complicated, more expensive process to do something that could be handled in a more efficient way for less money. So my proposal is going to be that we do what I just outlined, which is to modify the original agreement between the foundation, city, and library to reduce the amount of the annual donation from the foundation, and then let the foundation and N N D A deal directly with one another. But I would like to have Steve and Rob come up to see if they are in agreement with this process.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'd just like to ask both of you if you have any objections to what I just outlined, where we would have you deal with one another on the business retention and expansion program, the lease, and then change the original agreement, Steve, so that we would reduce your donation to the city by the amount of the N N D A contract, and then the library would continue with all of the other responsibilities that they have at the incubator and the hub, just pulling out the business expansion and retention program.
So I think right now, the agreement is the library is managing Adams Hub, so I think I'd have to pull back where I manage Adams Hub and then have an agreement with the library and have an agreement with N N D A. Otherwise, I don't, otherwise I think it's in conflict with how we manage, how Adams Hub, how I manage N N D A in Adams Hub. Anyway, that's my, that's my only thought.
But the general concept of dealing directly with N N D A, are there any objections on your part to doing that?
No, there's not.
Okay, Rob?
Yeah, for the record, Rob Hooper, no problems with N N D A. We'll be doing the same amount of work year away, so we're happy to work directly with the hub. Well, Steve, do you wanna get back in the economic development game for the hub? I've heard from you telling me that you wanted out of that. Now you wanna get back in?
Well, let me give you my perspective, I guess, big picture. So I'm a business consultant in Boise. I've been in a couple hundred businesses. I've turned around four dozen businesses where I take control of them. I serve as a court-appointed receiver over, either as a conservator or receiver, over about three dozen. And so my perspective of business is that small businesses in particular do not have the resources to see what's happening, what's coming down the pike as quick as they should. I feel that 80% of all existing businesses, small businesses, are in some form of failure, and they have to reinvent themselves within four or five years. The world is changing so quick. They don't keep up, they're not able to keep up. It's not that they don't want to, they're not able to keep up, they don't have the resources to keep up with how industry is changing, how technology is changing. So the whole concept of Adams Hub is there's a ton of information out there that could be available, that I provide as a consultant, that is readily available at the library. So I do benchmarking for businesses in the same industry. I pay $15,000 a year for some databases that the library already has. I do market research. I stay in tune with the different industries that I get involved in, and that's all readily available there at the library. The digital age is really making, I think, libraries more important. There's more information being developed in one hour than a human being can keep up with in a lifetime. And we don't know where to go, we don't know how to find it, so there's just tons of, there's tons of data out there, but how do you convert it to information that's meaningful to a business? And so that's why I value the library. And I value bringing those tools into Adams Hub, not to replicate economic development of anybody, what anybody else is doing, but in effort to try to have tools available and then try to let the existing businesses in Carson City know what those tools are and to assist them with it. So the original design was get that information, get those tools there, so not only are we trying to incubate new businesses, but we're trying to get all the potential information. How does this, how does your business match against your industry? What quartile are you in? What's coming down the pike? What's, you know, there are 10,000 patents out there the government's trying to put out in private enterprise. What fits with you? There's a ton of information out there that small businesses don't know. So that's one aspect. And the other aspect that I was trying to get done was to have an outbound party basically going out and letting the businesses know what's available, and we will help them, to find out, but for this, I could be doing that. So what is the but for this? That every business has. Every business has a barrier. They have some kind of hurdle to overcome. And if we know what that is, there's a lot of available help to help them do that. Everybody thinks it's just money, and it's, I would say 80% of the time, it's not money. So in thinking through what's happened with the turnover with the staff we've had there...
Turnover where?
At Adams Hub. We've, you know, we've had some turnover with, you know, we've lost Sina, we've lost Valerie, we've, we've lost some continuity. So my objective is to, instead of having the library be outbound, I thought N N D A could do, do that well, and I would like to still have the resources, however much the library wants to, to have at Adams Hub, available for existing and new startup businesses. So that's, that's, that's the vision. And I'm happy to help do that. I was just trying to pass it, I'm getting old, Bob, you know, I, so, but I still have a few years left, I think.
Yo, that's a good deal, that's good. All right. Anybody else on the board? Question? John?
Thank you. Just one, well, maybe more than one. I, I don't know quite from what you just said, how to envision this. What you're saying is that you're gonna turn the, some of the role over to Rob's outfit, the N N D A, and then who retains the rest of the role? I, I go back to my days when my parents were in the newspaper business, and then I was later, and newspapers were a lot better when they were run by one person than they have been as public entities, et cetera. They tried to become all things to all people. So the rest of the job that Rob's outfit isn't doing, are you going to do that from Caldwell, Idaho, or are you gonna, or is the library gonna do it, or how, how do you envision that part?
So the design is that there would be a library, there would be a Adams Hub director. We've, working with the library, we've hired Kelly, so we now have a manager of the Adams Hub, who's there full-time. Her job is to not, is to manage the incubator itself, so the rents and what's going on in the incubator, and to also put together, there's two other aspects to her job, to put together all the resources already available by all other economic agencies, or what are resources available for a business. So really, I, my goal is to have Adams Hub be the hub for, here's where you can get help. So we're not trying to necessarily be the helper itself, but here are all the resources available in Northern Nevada. So that's the Adam Hub manager's job. And as for the outbound, finding out what is each but for this for each company, that's gonna be the role of N N D A. So what I guess I'm proposing in response to what Brad is asking is that we let the Adams Hub manager manage Adams Hub, working under me, she'd be an employee of Adams Hub, and then we enter a contract with the Carson City Library for what resources they wanna bring there on the but for this. We work with, then I'll work direct with N N D A for the outbound to find out but for this for each business in the community.
So the manager would answer to you, not the library?
What's that?
So the manager would answer to you and not the library and the library board of trustees?
Yeah, so right now Kelly was hired with both the library and I involved. If I'm going to be over the Adams Hub with N N D A, I was, my thinking is I'll make Kelly an employee of Adams Hub direct, and then I'll, I'll enter a contract with the library for whatever they wanna bring, I'll enter a contract for N N D A, whatever they bring. And as I thought about it, at first I thought this was a delay, but I think it makes sense. And my, my thought is that then lets me say, if there's other elements, other economic or business help out there, it frees me up to make agreements with them where I'm not replicating or duplicating things, but I, I can, I can pull things together at the hub.
Thank you, Steve. I, I think you understand what I'm asking.
Yes.
I, I happen to believe that there's one person in the room that is the leader and one person not, and it's kinda hard for...
I would be responsible. I would be responsible.
Thank you.
I know Stacy's got a question, got a couple of the questions, but Steve, while you, on that last answer, you know, I remember you telling me that the Hop and May Adams Foundation wanted out of the economic development, that's why I was gonna move the hub to the library, because it didn't wanna do it, and that's what, that was one of the underlying, one of them motivations to do it. Now you're telling me that you wanna get back in that game, and the second thing I have to question, the second question I have is, this, the plan that the library board approved was put together by you two sitting here at the desk, plus a library director. Now you're saying you wanna change that plan, after it's been voted on by the library board? Am I understanding that correct? And if I am understanding that correct, why?
Yeah, so Mayor Bob, I'm happy to go forward with the agreement as it is, or I'm happy to go forward with doing it direct. I did participate with N N D A in the library, I'm the one that required them to come up with a joint operating agreement, so I understood that they understood the relationship. So I'm prepared to go forward with the joint operating agreement between N N D A and the library, or I'm prepared to say, no, I'll do an agreement each individually for them. I, I'm here to tell you that I will, I, I guess I don't want Adams Hub to be a thorn in the side of the board of supervisors.
As to the Adams Hub, what's the difference between the two approaches? As to the Hop and May Adams Foundation, what's the difference between the two approaches? As to you, your foundation?
Instead of having, instead of being responsible for the building and seeing N N D A and the library work together with me resolving any issues, all of a sudden, instead of them having an agreement, I have an agreement with one, I have an agreement with the other. So it's really, it's, I, I was trying to address...
Is there a dollar difference to you or to the hot library?
Is there what?
Is there a dollar, out-of-pocket dollar difference to either you or the library?
Neither, I don't, I don't believe so. I guess there would be, I would assume responsibility for the cost accounting and the budget. Sorry, I can see that difference.
So would I, am I understanding right then that you wanna get back, the Adams, Hop and May Adams Foundation wants back in the economic development business through the hub? Am I understanding that correctly?
I believe we've always felt like we were in it, we were just trying to have partners come in with it. So I, I think you, I think the misunderstanding is you think there's been this clean break of the foundation from Adams Hub, and there has not been. I've, I'm still involved in the Adams Hub, I still meet with the library, I still meet with N N D A, I, I'm still involved. The difference is, instead of the two having a contract and the board of supervisors being involved, is I, Adams Hub will have individual contracts with each. That's the only difference, and that's in response to Brad.
All right, Stacy?
I, you know, I, as you drilled into it, I, I felt more comfortable with what you were saying. I mean, at, at first I was kinda trying to figure out what the difference was, but there's a couple of things I wanna ask, and I just wanna throw at both of you in terms of what is important to me, and ask how, through either of these two arrangements, whether it's this agreement that we see before us, or another agreement that comes back to us in a month or whatnot. One is, you know, I think in our community, we, we know, despite Rob's team's effort, that, you know, we're beginning to get landlocked in terms of, of manufacturing, and, and we just don't have the space. So I, I, business retention is really important to me. It, it's very important to me. And so, excuse me, that's the first question. I wanna know in this scenario, how business retention works in these two scenarios? And, and the second situation that I'm thinking of is, I, I think we have a lack right now, and this came up when we did our goal-setting session back in January. There's, there are scenarios where a given business will come in, and they don't come in and knock on N N D A's door, or W N D A's door, or anybody else's door, they go to the planning department, and they ask questions that maybe are specific to city, excuse me, to city codes and ordinances, but there's a dropped opportunity there. And, and so in that scenario, how can some follow-up be done by this so that missed opportunity doesn't go away? So those are the two things, I, I hope I wouldn't do wordy there, but those are the two things that I'm most interested in.
So let me start, and then I'll let Rob finish. So one of my abexies that I've been working on for, I wanna say a year, was to get N N D A downtown and get them involved in the Adams Hub, and they'll also have an office in the Adams 308 Building. So I felt that was important to get them down there. I think they're literally across the street. And then once we get all the resources available, we become an easy one-stop-shop for whatever they need. And so planning can send them across the street. And N N D A will be there with all their, their resources and their thoughts. Kelly will be there for the Adams Hub with, here are all the resources available, what do you need, and kinda help direct. So that's the, that's the whole idea of Adams Hub being downtown, across from the city hall.
For the record, Rob Hooper again, thanks for that question, for both those questions. Those are excellent questions, and I'll try to make it very brief. But the business retention expansion, of course, is two of the legs of our three-legged stool in economic development, and it's something that we do do. This contract allows us to do it more fully and more completely. The way that this will work is by, first off, we've hired a full-time person to do nothing but concentrate on this, and we have other staff supporting it. We're going to, well, we already have assembled the seventeen different industries, it's not gonna just be manufacturing, we're looking at a broader base of employers, number one. We've come up with questions that we wanna ask of these folks, and how we're gonna keep track of them in a database, that's been put together. We're looking for common denominator solutions. So we've created a toolbox, which is very extensive of all the different programs that are available. Again, as Steve pointed out, we don't do all the problem solving, we connect the companies with who the best resources are for those problem solving. So we've come up with this great toolbox, and then we will look at common denominator issues for industry segments, and we plan to host many seminars at the hub and invite the entire community from that targeted segment to come down. And then we'll know out of that community segment who really has an interest, we'll then get to know them a little bit better, then we'll schedule follow-up meetings to go in and detail them, take their information, put it in the database, find out where their problems are, and then be able to connect them with the right resource. The representation of the library is excellent in this program because it's been pointed out, both in the interviews earlier, which I found quite interesting, and what Steve has been talking about, is that the library has great resources for businesses, and they don't know about it. In, in the same note, N V I E, for instance, has great resources. There's a myriad of these organizations out there that have great resources. What they don't have is enough clients. Meanwhile, over here on the other side, we have all these businesses that have great needs, and they don't know that these great resources exist. So the business retention expansion program is to connect those two together, and very specifically when there's needs. The third thing that we'll be doing in this matrix is looking at business advocacy. I had a really interesting meeting earlier in the week with Lieutenant Governor and her business advocacy program that she is putting together. She wants to be involved in this. This could be the pilot for the state. And what that means is when a company has a specific issue, we want them to know they can call us, they'll call our guy, Sean is his name, he'll create a case filed on it, and then we'll start working on connecting that, that issue. We are, we already have one that we're working on right now, where a company has a problem. The solutions are there, the companies don't know it. And I remember going back, and I'm sorry to drag on, but going back to when I was at V R P, we had a labeling issue with Health and Human Services, and I was able to call Lieutenant Governor's office, and they connected me into the right place. I had no idea who to call as a business. We wanna fill in that gap, and, you know, and make that work. As far as your second question, we already do regularly communicate with the planning department, and we do get calls from them and back and forth. Andrew Haskin, our business development director, does that. I think that can be improved on both sides. We already work, of course, very closely with the commercial real estate, through our real estate committee, with our, the builders and contractors. So we put out as big a net as we can to try to surface opportunities. That's why we're here, is to receive them, to quantify qualit...
So we've come up with this great toolbox, and then we will look at common denominator issues for industry segments, and we plan to host many seminars at the hub, and invite the entire community from that targeted segment to come down. And then we'll know out of that community segment, who really has an interest, we'll then get to know them a little bit better, then we'll schedule follow-up meetings to go in and detail them, take their information, put it in the database, find out where their problems are, and then be able to connect them with the right resource. The representation of the library is excellent in this program because it's been pointed out, both in the interviews earlier, which I found quite interesting, and what Steve has been talking about is that the library has great resources for businesses, and they don't know about it. In the same note, NVIE, for instance, has great resources. There's a myriad of these organizations out there that have great resources. What they don't have is enough clients. Meanwhile, over here on the other side, we have all these businesses that have great needs, and they don't know that these great resources exist. So the business retention expansion program is to connect those two together, and very specifically when there's needs. The third thing that we'll be doing in this matrix is looking at business advocacy. I had a really interesting meeting earlier in the week with Lieutenant Governor and her business advocacy program that she is putting together. She wants to be involved in this. This could be the pilot for the state. And what that means is when a company has a specific issue, we want them to know they can call us, they'll call our guy, Sean is his name, he'll create a case filed on it, and then we'll start working on connecting that, that issue. We already have one that we're working on right now, where a company has a problem. The solutions are there, the companies don't know it. And I remember going back, and I'm sorry to drag on, but going back to when I was at V R P, we had a labeling issue with Health and Human Services, and I was able to call Lieutenant Governor's office, and they connected me into the right place. I had no idea who to call as a business. We want to fill in that gap, and, you know, and make that work. As far as your second question, we already do regularly communicate with the planning department, and we do get calls from them and back and forth. Andrew Haskin, our Business Development Director, does that. I think that can be improved on both sides. We already work, of course, very closely with the commercial real estate, through our Real Estate Committee, with our, the builders and contractors. So we put out as big a net as we can to try to surface opportunities. That's why we're here, is to receive them, to quantify, qualify, and process them through our system. Open for suggestions, we always, if you hear of anybody out there with a problem or an opportunity, call us. That's why we're here.
Laurie, then, John.
So I want to say that when I, when I look at providing services, or looking at contracts, and who should be doing what, I like to put my subject matter experts in the right lanes. And so I really believe, Steve, that this is your vision, and that you are the leader of the vision. And so I think you're the right body to be leading it versus N N D A on its own, or the library on its own. And I think that your thought process of getting the right subject matter experts and doing a contract with them to fulfill whatever that goal is that you have for the hub is the right way to go. I think the library has lots and lots of missions that they need to achieve, and they fit well into one of the lanes that you're talking about. I'm not as comfortable with saying that the library should be managing Mr. Hooper's operation at all, and having this joint, I think it, I think it puts cogs in the wheel versus effective, efficient, and immediate action that you can take as the head to say, this is the direction I want you to go, this is the direction I want you to go, and is the contract being met. So I'm much more comfortable with amending the original contract out and letting Steve have a contract with N N D A. I just think the vision of what you want to achieve will be much cleaner, efficient, and effective, and meet your goals, because that's, I think, what all of us up here are after, is spot-on to what you said you want to achieve. I just think that's the better way to go.
So, well, I appreciate that, and that's kind of been my thinking as I've watched the interaction and the time and the effort taken to make this operating agreement between the library and N N D A. It would have been very easy for me to have done them direct. And so the original design is my fault, and, and Bob, I was trying to say, my view is, I've got a building, and I don't want to recreate any, any economic effort that's already going on out there. But what I do believe is that it's not brought together, and so the hub is trying to bring that together and add incubation. So of the three dozen economic development elements, incubation is the least payback, business retention and development is the highest payback. And so I don't want to be N N D A, I don't want to be the library, I don't want to be any of the development agencies, I just want to see if I can be a hub to bring it there, get it out to the community. I've got a hub manager then that can say, here's where you need to go. Does that make it more simple?
Go ahead, John.
Well, I think my questions have been answered to a degree, although I am, and perhaps this is trending the way that we'll take care of this, but I, I looked at this contract, and I looked at the situation, and I said, what we seem to have here, I don't want to call it a three-headed monster, but let's call it a three-eyed cyclops, if that's not a terrible image, three eyes instead of one. So I, if we're sorting it out the way I think we're sorting it out, then it sounds like I have no more questions.
Is the rent that you would be paying as N N D A market-based rent, or is it based on the amount that you're getting from Hop May Adams Foundation?
It's market-based.
And that market-based is what per square foot?
It's a dollar seventy-five.
And that number just happens to mean sixty thousand dollars?
Real close.
It's close.
Excuse me, isn't the rent, the rent is separate? The sixty thousand dollars is for a job, the rent is not for an employee, the rent is not part of that.
Yes, it's a separate rental.
Yeah. So the dollar seventy-five is for the rent, the sixty thousand is, is for the employee.
Yeah, and there's, there's two different lease contracts, one with the hub for the two offices we're taking on in there, and then the suite of offices we're taking at 308. And then, I'm starting to call it the campus, right, which is really, it's going to be a very great thing.
I'm sorry, I do have one more question. I'd like to ask our interim library director, and you can't answer for the next library director, but does this sound like a vision that the library and the trustees can, can get behind? Because it's not exactly what you had voted on.
Thank you, Diane Baker, interim library director. I will need to take the proposals back to the library board for discussion. I have had some discussion with library board members coming up to this meeting, so it's not a total surprise to all, but we will have to take it back for their discussion and participation as how, you know, how the next steps will be.
Following that up, was the vote of the Board of Trustees about the contract that we have before us unanimous?
It was.
Okay, any other questions at the board? Public comment on this? Anybody? All right, we'll come bring them back to the board. Somebody want to try a motion?
Yes. I move to direct staff to bring back a revised and restructured agreement between the Hop May Adams Foundation and the Carson City Library.
There's a motion and a second? Is there any more meat on that bone, other than just that? Just bring back an agreement?
You know, I thought about that, but the more specific I am, I think the more I back it's into a corner, so I'd rather leave it between the three parties to, to work it out, the details, and then bring it back to us.
All right. On the motion discussion, I will be voting against this, because I'm in favor of the original agreement that the library board did, and I will tell you why. Because you two sitting there, and Diane, designed this progress to go down, it's been through it, I don't see a whole lot of difference, other than who reports to who, in terms of the dollars, I don't see a whole lot of difference. But I'm a little concerned that now, you know, what you had proposed is no longer something you want to do, and you put a whole lot of people out doing it. So I'm going to be voting no on it, okay? On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed nay, I'll be voting nay. Thanks. All right. Doesn't want to let me vote no.
You got this. You're no. You're red up there.
Okay, all right. All right. All right, let's take up the next matter. Let's go to Parks and Rec, item sixteen.
Okay, good morning, Mayor and Supervisor, Supervisors. A few weeks ago, Nancy Paulson and Ann Volenger and I had the opportunity to attend the grand opening of the new Tahoe East Shore Trail that extends from Incline Village to San Harbor. It's a wonderful trail that is, it's a beautiful trail for Lake Tahoe, and if any of you have not had the opportunity to experience this trail, I really recommend that you do so. So the next segment of trail is going to extend from San Harbor through rural Carson City to Spooner Junction. And here to, to help talk about that trail and to give your presentation on it, I have Carl Hasty with the Tahoe Transportation District, and Derek Kirkland with Wood Rogers Incorporated.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Supervisors. Happy to be here today, thank you for having us on your agenda. We're very excited about the trail segment that has opened, and we are ready and already are working on the next segment, and what we're here to talk to you about today. I've bringing some NDOT materials that I've left on the back table here, related to what's called the Nevada State Line to State Line Bi-Trail, something we've been underway with for about ten years, of which the latest completion in Incline is the illustration. We have over two miles of it built at South Shore, and really, we're looking to get that whole thirty-plus mile section completed, and so that's why we're here today, happy to do that. You may not know of the Tahoe Transportation District, for those of you who don't know, we are a bi-state special district. And Carson City sits on the board, along with five other of the local governments representing Tahoe, and so we are pleased to be here today with having you as a member. With that, I will conclude and turn it over to Derek, who will walk you through, right now, the environmental document is out for the trail, and give you some highlights on that. Thank you.
Good morning, Derek Kirkland with Wood Rogers. So I, some of you probably remember, some of you may not, so back in twenty, 2011, 2012, we started, I was with TTD at the time, but we started, started the SR 28 Corridor Management Plan, looking at a lot of broad issues in the SR 28 Corridor. Mainly, some of these pictures here, where we had people walking in the highways, using them as sidewalks, we had people getting creative, climbing over guardrails, and so we, we felt that there was, there was not one thing that would, that would solve that, that problem, there was multiple things that would, would have to solve that problem, one of them being thirteen agencies, three counties, state DOTs, it goes on. So thirteen agencies, we brought together through the SR 28 Corridor Management Plan, and came up with these visions to create a bike path that basically extended all along the East Shore, SR 28 Corridor, implement transit, and then, and also look at parking. Parking was a big deal, people said they didn't want to park on their shoulders, they had to, because it was the only place to get to the beaches. And so what we've really looked at with each of these segments, and the, the environmental document for the next eight miles does exactly that, is look at, look at parking, it looks at how transit circulates through the corridor, and it looks at how to connect all these parking areas, transit stops, and the recreation areas with, with this path. So with that, the East Shore Express was kind of the first thing that came out of the 28 Corridor Plan, that started actually in 2012 with the Corridor Management Plan as a test. I can say that that is continued on today, it's running as we speak, and you can see from 2012 to 2018, it's, it's more than doubled its ridership, so huge, huge success. The park-and-ride lot in the north is full most of the time through the summer, and so hopefully, continue that, that East Shore Express as part of this next eight miles. We are looking at, as I'll get into the slides a little bit, is another park-and-ride lot at the south end of the, of the corridor to kind of complement that, and then basically have the circulator, and use that for kind of the peak capacities. Little timeline on just some of the funding that's gone into this, this project, and where we're at and where we're headed. Basically, State Question One, back in 2002, was approved, Washoe County One was also approved, and those funds were largely used to leverage the, the federal funding that has gone into this project, and made a lot of these bike trails possible, between the South Demonstration Project, which is down by State Line, by the Casino Core, and then now the Incline to San Harbor Trail. And so where we're at today is basically, we all know that the Incline to San Harbor Trail is done, the EA is out for the next eight miles from San Harbor to Spooner, that is wrapping up here in the next couple of weeks, so that is out, and I'll have a slide where people can go to provide input to that. But ultimately, once we get through that environmental process, hopefully we'll be done this fall, roll into kind of the final design phase, and hopefully, 2022 is probably a little aggressive, but hopefully roll kind of into construction, start building the, building that next eight miles of bike path and parking improvements, and kind of what I'm going to get into here. Just to give you a little vision of our little synopsis of kind of what's out there today, the pictures on the left were the, what we called the South Demonstration Project, which was basically from State Line to Round Hill Pines Beach. And so that was completed, and then now the Incline to San Harbor Trail is completed on the right, and you can kind of see those pictures. And so a lot of different, those projects were nice, because they tested a lot of different elements of, you know, crossing sensitive areas, and how you can do that, and so we've, we've got a lot of great information going forward to design this next eight miles, which has a little bit of both of those projects in it. Just a couple more pictures of the, of the ribbon cutting before the path was constructed. Mr. Mayor was, was in there with Governor Sandoval, a great day, and so it was, it was awesome to see how we got from there, and with the, a couple years later with the trail constructed, and it's just a, just a phenomenal project, and we're hoping to kind of continue that the next eight miles, and so it just gives you an idea of kind of the elements that are, you'll continue to see in the environmental document. So the environmental document for the next eight miles, San Harbor, Spooner Park, basically includes eight miles of shared use path. Again, we'll look, similar to the Incline to San Harbor path in a lot of sections, we're looking at expanding two existing lots, kind of in the central corridor, one is in Washoe County, one is in Carson City, adding two new lots, one of those being in Carson City, it's Gunkarber, and the other one being in Douglas County at the south end of, of the corridor. Also, the, the unique thing about this project is, is it has a huge benefit, and then it also offers co-location with the Ivkid Sewer Export Line. And so that is a big deal in terms of working with Ivkid and NDOT, replacing their line, there are sections that have to be replaced within the next five years, they're putting Band-Aids on them right now that wash out the highway. And so the opportunity to put the, that pipe underneath the path cuts costs, it's cost savings for both the bike path and Ivkid for their export line, cuts construction time down for them by, by half. So a lot of, lot of opportunities there, they also have funding for that, and so that can be used to leverage some additional federal funding for the overall project, so that's a huge benefit in that partnership that's been built. We work with them regularly through this environmental document. The other thing you'll see in terms of utility locations, we've worked with Envy Energy to underground those power lines, some of those power lines are, I think, from like 1928, and so the, the ability for them to go in the path and put those underground reduces a huge fire risk reduction there. And then also looking at the potential with the effluent line, they're working with TRPA, I believe this has been done in, I think in Tahoe City, NTPUD did it, has put fire hydrants on there, so that it, along that, that effluent line, so in the case of a forest fire along the East Shore, there would be some fire hydrants that could be utilized as that effluent water is treated, so. So we're looking at that as part of the environmental document. We're also including, water quality improvements are anticipated in a lot of the parking areas and along the eight-mile stretch. TRPA is also, we're working with them as part of the EA to include a permanent aquatic invasive species AIS station incorporated into that south park-and-ride lot, and so that's a huge benefit there. And then also, that, what you see with the first three miles is looking at a lot of emergency pullouts, where can we add vista points, both on the highway and the bike trail, and give people that opportunity that they want, to safely get off the highway and look at that. I'll kind of bring you through here, this is, and then in the environmental document, you'll see kind of the map, it kind of lays out, but this just kind of gives you an idea through San Harbor, of looking at, at where the emergency pullouts are proposed, and so these are right out of the environmental document. Kind of move quickly, so these are the two existing parking lots. One, that basically, they're, they're going to be tripled in size, is kind of their proposal, and then I'll get to the parking here in just a minute. So the shared use path, we, we talked about, these are a couple of views of, of renderings that are, the visual analysis that was in the EA. So a lot of sections in the bottom, you'll see, similar to kind of the, the Incline to San Harbor stretch, and then as we move further south, you get into the trees, you, there's a lot more screening on this section than there was in the first three miles, so it's a huge benefit for the project in terms of cost, and looking at different treatments for walls. So getting into the parking, so this just is a, a concept of the parking areas, and so really what we did with the parking was we looked at from twenty-six numbers, shoulder parking counts, kind of figured out what the demand is out there today, because really, what you see is the corridor is at, is pretty much at capacity, and so we're not looking at, at really adding new parking spaces, but really kind of reorganizing the existing shoulder parking, and get those people into safe off-highway parking areas, and looking at putting as much, maximizing the internal parking areas as possible, so that we can get people during cover, especially during the shoulder season, when you may not have transit, is making sure there's enough parking internal to the corridor, and so we do cover that. But this just gives you an idea, so Chimney Beach and So Chimney Beach and Secret Harbor are kind of those two central parking lots that you see today. Those both get expanded to 100 and 140, and I think, so that's 200, roughly 250 spaces. And today, there's only 50 spaces there. So that just kind of gives you an idea of kind of some of the parking improvements in this area. New restrooms, trailhead access, safe off-highway parking. These, these are critical to kind of the success of this corridor. And we've seen that with Incline to San Harbor of how the impact that that's had, having those parking and the transit and how all that works. This is just a parking table of, of how we calc that. Basically, we're looking peak demand on a, a peak summer day in, in August. We're probably looking somewhere around 584 spaces. Average peak day, 446. And so right now, we're projected at about 535. And that's where transit would help supplement that. And the goal is also that people start to shift and change and change their behavior a little bit in the corridor. So very constrained, but that's kind of the parking analysis that you, you will find in the EA. And then we have the south park and ride lot. So this, this is about 250 spaces. We've got a, a place for transit buses to pull in. You can see the permanent AIS station, and then the bike path will route right in through there. And the Forest Service is actually looking at this, this site for potential for future winter recreation activities as well, to basically move the sledding hill. So the existing parking lot is basically just, just to the east here a little bit. That will basically go back to NDOT. And then this parking lot is just a little bit further to the west, more across from the Spooner State Park. And so a lot of benefits there to formalize that area. We talked about utility relocation already. And so the SR28 corridor, so the EA is out, it was released July 12th, and it comment, it's a 30-day comment period through the Forest Service. So that document is scheduled to be, public comment period closes August 11th. So we encourage everyone to go on there, take a look, provide feedback. And then there's the link on the screen there on where you can do that and get the information. So with that, I will close my presentation and be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Any questions? John?
Yeah. Did I hear you correctly? 800 spaces at the two parking lots, roughly?
Internal is about 250. And so overall, we're looking at about 535 parking space, off-highway parking spaces within the next...
I was at the two together in my head. Okay, I understand. You think that's going to cut it or not?
So with, with the EA and working with the Forest Service and a lot of agencies, you know, there's capacity issues. If we start, you know, putting a bunch of parking in there, then the beaches get overcrowded, and they're already dealing with that. So the thought is, is, is reorganizing the use that's there. And that was the approach we took with the 28 corridor management plan, is how do you manage the, the incredible demand that's there today? Because it's not managed. And so really, what we're looking at is, is a, a big improvement from what you see today. And then trans, so any capacity over that would be met during the peak time with transit services.
And a last question, then. They won't be able to park along the side of the, of the road?
Yeah. So the, the plan is, is once the off-highway parking goes in, the trail's in, and you have transit, is basically that same concept from Incline to San Harbor, that no parking zone's going to expand all the way up to Spooner.
And I could add to that a little bit. Enforcement has always been an issue on the 28 corridor, primarily because there's not an alternative. And so what this project really does is provide the alternative. Once the alternatives are there, then enforcement can start to be a real tool in using here. So this is pretty well thought through, including how do we maintain this? And so things like parking, I mean, one of the things, ways we're looking at, how do you maintain the parking and the new trail? We're really introducing a pilot on the incline section for paid parking as a way to do that because that will also help finance the enforcement.
Yeah, that was my next question. Thank you.
Brad, Brad and Stacy.
Can you give us an update on funding? And is it on target to, to meet construction?
I can speak to that some. We do have dollars to move into design. So after the record of decision is made by the Forest Service, we are expecting to then move on to TRPA to get that permitted, once the project is permitted, and we can move into design. So we're at the stage right now of having these discussions with Incline Village General Improvement District, as well as NV Energy on funding agreements, kind of taking this a piece at a time in terms of funding the, the full design that's going to be necessary. As Derek noted, both NV Energy and, and Incline Village General Improvement District have dollars for their portions of the project. That then puts us in the position of pursuing the other kind of federal dollars and other discretionary grants, which is a lot of what we have to do at Tahoe in order to complete a project. So we don't have the full construction yet, but that's the approach that we have in play and what we have available to us sets us up well to be successful on that.
Some of the, you know, details on this, I know you're, you haven't designed it yet, right? So I get that. But so on the parking lot and the path as they connect, the idea, I assume, is that the parking lots will be in strategic places and will have connections to their associated beaches, correct? I mean, so that sort of all jives together, right, Derek?
Yeah, that's correct. I can go back. Find a good one here. So you can kind of see in some of these where the, you know, where the path, and I'll use the Chimney Beach one. So basically, the path, you know, we try to put these in areas where there, there aren't sensitive areas, SEZ. We try to incorporate them where people are parking today, where there's existing asphalt and parking areas. And also, as you saw with the, the first three miles, the state parks actually went back and started, you know, they put up some fencing, and then they, they put in areas where they want people to go to the beach, where it's safe for them to get down to the beach. And it gets rid of those social trails. So that's the benefit of this one is Forest Service and state parks will have that same opportunity to kind of control the access points to the beaches and make sure people are getting down, say if there's trash, restrooms, there's, there's things for people to, to utilize in those areas. So those definitely, we are, the 30% designs, we have thought about a lot of that and kind of where there are social trails and, and kind of where we want access to be. So that definitely is a big consideration.
Yeah, and I get, yeah, that, that's, that's what I was getting at, so that we take those social trails and, and we formalize them so that they can be properly maintained, properly enforced. And, you know, we're not, yeah. So I appreciate you taking that into consideration. And then in terms of the, the public transportation, are these parking lots then sort of stopping points for those buses as well? That's part of the plan also, I assume, correct?
Yes, I can answer that. We, we operate the transit system, and so it is seasonal. And what else, what else is designed in here besides the parking lots are bus stops. So the overall concept is to provide people more choices to get to where they want to go. Safer places to park, access if they want to go on foot, access if they want to go by transit, access if they want to go by bike.
So if you want to park at Incline and go to Chimney Beach, you hop on the bus.
Then that would be the...
Get off of Chimney Beach, kick your walk down.
That's correct. And so what we're envisioning is seasonally being able to expand the current transit service that runs from Incline to San Harbor right now and run that up and down the entire corridor over the season. So seasonality is, is thought through on this in terms of how does the corridor get used? When we did the corridor management plan that Derek was referring to, we got a lot of community input from the users of this on time of year, time of day. I mean, we, we almost look at the corridor as it, it gets used in shifts, if you will, of people coming and going. So we need to contemplate and accommodate that. We also need to try to encourage as much turnover as possible because Tahoe is a, has a, you know, we've got a huge demand on a finite resource. And so our challenge is to try to create as much accessibility for as many people as possible so that they all get what they enjoy at Tahoe without damaging it.
Thank you.
Brad?
Yeah, I think that this is a great plan, and there's a lot of components to it. There's the parking, there's the beach access, and then there's bike traffic. I, I see some bike riders out here in the audience, and I've ridden around Tahoe a couple of times. And, you know, the north side of the lake and then the east side of the lake along 28, you just hope for the best. You just hope to survive it. So the faster you can build this, the better, as far as I'm concerned.
Amen to that one. All right. Any other comments with the board? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? Yep, come on up.
Mayor, Council, Denny French, Carson City. I had to step out. I was getting too cold. So I may have missed this. Are there any metered parking or timed parking, part of this, in the sense of limiting the time that persons can park, or actual physical meters, or gatekeeper or ticket holder or such? I missed that, so I'm sorry. Is that part?
I can speak to that. There is, we do have meters on the new trailhead parking in, in, in Incline. They're not operational yet. We have a, we have a few ordinance changes to make on that. But the idea there is to also experiment with kind of congestion pricing, if you will. You know, encourage people if they want to pay less per hour, come in the morning, come in the late afternoon. Not everybody at the peak time. Our peak time tends to be between 10 and 3:00 in the afternoon, and everybody, you know, that's a lot of our problem. But we got a finite amount of capacity and a very urban demand on that capacity, and everybody wants to be the same slot. So we're looking at all those issues of how do we kind of encourage that turnover on that? I can also tell you that, you know, others are looking at, even like at San Harbor, at potential for reservation systems and things like that when it comes to the parking. So these are the solutions that we're arriving at. We're going to be doing some experimentation, to be honest, and try to find a, a way that folks can work with and adjust, and everybody gets what they need.
Thank you very much. I have another question, is it okay?
Sure.
Thank you. As far as the bike ends and such, one of the things that I saw, and that's why I asked this question, is that people will park there and then bike out, you know, giving them that way. But with the monitored and metered, then there is a consideration of time and, and the expense then. But that still won't stop people from being able to, if they can afford it, stay there quite a while. So there's not a, not somebody marking tires saying, you've been there, you're two hours, you've got to pull out, no matter what you put in the chain purse.
Right now, we're not looking at that kind of metering and enforcement as being, with a time limit now. Time will tell. Like I say, we're going to be going through some experimentation here to see how things work. And then seasons of the year.
And that leads to my question on the, have you engaged with any of the, there's not a whole lot of companies along there, but there are places in town that would facilitate people getting on a bus or a tram or such. But then there are places for people to put their bikes on. So those places are being advertised as supports to this?
There are vendors who are definitely participating with this and who are working on, with the new bike trail right now.
I appreciate that. Thank you. It's exciting. All right. Thank you very much.
You bet. Any other public comment? Anybody? Okay, I don't see any. This is for presentation only. Thanks to all of you for doing good things to the lake, folks. All right, we'll be in recess for five, five, seven minutes, actually. How's that?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half.[1401.42]
Seven and a half.[201.43]
Have the ability to, uh, to recruit that appropriate person unless we're paying, um, an appropriate wage and even this is just going to be on the bottom end of what our surrounding counties are paying. So, uh, again, this is something that I'll, I'll be in favor of, although I agree with Lori, you know, maybe we're going about it in a way that, uh, I wish was, was better. Uh, I think that this is something that's necessary and it's the only way that we're ever going to get to our goal, to the end results that we're looking for in that office.
John Soufaj, Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I've said this before on other issues, I'm not so concerned with the market area, uh, although I understand why you bring that to us. Uh, I am concerned, however, that A, this person works directly for this board, as does Nancy, and our, we have one other, and B, this is a lot less than we pay a lot of our city employees who have, who are heading up offices, et cetera, or even below that level. So, I will support it as well, though I am not generally speaking supportive as for it being outside the budget. I think we're stuck with that. It's just the way that things fell to us, both with the legislature making changes and what transpired since then.
Anybody else? Okay, let me take public comment here real quick. Public comment, anybody? No? All right. Um, motions in order if we want to drive. Soufaj Bagwell.
I move to approve the compensation range increase for the Carson City Public Guardian position as requested.
There's a motion and a second on the motion. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, carried. Okay. Thank you, Melanie. And Melanie, thank you for your help on that other stuff I had with the... Did I do it?
No, no, no. John and I were talking.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay, all right. All right, let's take up, um, item fif- eighteen. This is a possible action regarding proposed resolution to retroactively appoint Gail Robertson, Nancy Paulson, and Cynthia Gower as trustees of the Carson City Post Employment Benefits Plan for two-year term expiring June 30th, 2019, and appointing Beth Huck as Deputy Treasurer and Sherry Russell, Chief Financial Officer, and Debbie DeValle. She's a retiree as new trustees for two, two-year terms expiring June 30th, 2021. Why don't we want to do this?
I totally will.
Why don't we want to do it? We've been delinquent.
Um, good morning. So, um, Gail, Nancy, and Cynthia, um, were appointed in 2015 for a two-year term. Uh, I think there was some confusion over the timing of when they should, uh, be reappointed or, or when new trustees should be appointed. Um, so they were not reappointed in 2017. However, they've been acting in that capacity for the past two years. So, um, that's why we're asking to retroactively, um, reappoint them. And then, um, and then, uh, they've identified, um, three new people to begin serving effective July 1st for another two-year term.
Anybody else apply?
Uh, no, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right. Board comment? Public comment? All right. You want to comment? Mr. French, come on up. Sit next to Pam there, that's all right.
Mayor and Council Supervisors, um, I'm just curious as to, um, the fact that the retroactive and the fact that the ladies have been working in this position, uh, without having had re-upped, you know, um, that doesn't give then opportunity for people to apply for the position, or had that been an open space or consideration, or is it just to, to bring these ladies up to this point or to carry them on then the two more years, which is what I thought I was hearing?
New people.
So, other people hadn't applied for the position, or was it open to?
Todd, you want to answer that?
Uh...
Mr. Reese.
Certainly, Todd Reese, Deputy DA for the, uh, uh, record. Um, Mr. French, the, um, the trust requires, uh, certain categories of people, uh, be appointed. And, um, if I understand your question, your question is, what happened, kind of, should we allow people to apply two years ago and then, and then now?
Or now?
Now. You know, I believe that, um, the CFO did, um, ask for, within the categories of people required by the trust, did solicit, um, interest, uh, from the various, from various people. And, uh, the three people that, uh, are here were the ones that, that expressed the interest.
So, the ones that would be rolling their continuance of service are the ones that showed their interest again? There were no other entries, or?
The, the ones that are, uh, being reappointed, uh, for, or being reappointed for, retroactively appointed, have already been serving and they did serve. And the, and the ones that are being appointed going forward are the ones that express interest.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right. Any other public comment? Anybody? All right, we'll take, entertain a motion. I move to adopt resolution number 2019 dash R23. Let me see here, keep going off here. On the motion, uh, there's a motion, a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Carried. Okay. All right, let's take up, uh, item eighteen Bravo, uh, possible action regarding application removed $345,526.55 and uncollectible, uh, accounts receivable from the records of the ambulance fund. We do this every now and then. Why don't you tell us what's happening here if there's anything different?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Sherry Russell, CFO for the record. Uh, so we do do this twice a year. Um, our consultant, Whitman, sends us a list of items that they believe are not collectible, and, um, so we bring those forward to you for write-off. This is not the last step. Um, we do contract, um, with National Business Factors to be the hard collection agency. And my numbers are wrong here. We actually receive 70% and only pay them 30%. So, just to clarify that. Uh, and then I did provide a schedule this time, um, as requested last time we did this, to show, uh, bad debt analysis of total revenues. So, bad debts versus total revenues. And you can see back in 2010, 11, it was 30%, 40%. And we're doing great now. We're only at 16%, 17%. So, we've basically cut our write-offs in half. Probably.
That's good. It's always good to have a chief on the board. All right, Soufaj Bagwell.
So, my question really revolves around the write-offs that I'm seeing, that the insurance company actually paid the patient for the services and the city is not getting the funds. And it's my understanding, you know, if you look, I don't know, and it, and it's quite substantial, $1,300, $1,700, $1,100. So, my question is, I'm understanding it's because we don't have a contract potentially with one of the vendors, yet what rate are they paying the patient? Are they paying the patient the $1,300 but not us because we don't have a contract? Or are they paying the patient something less? I mean, I'm trying to get a, a better understanding here because there's quite a bit of money, and why can't we negotiate a contract because we're getting zero? And the patient's getting, I don't know how much? So, I'm interested.
Uh, Sandy Warko, EMS Manager, Carson City Fire Department for the record. So, uh, this is not necessarily due to a contract issue with an insurance company. It's how this insurance, that this particular Blue Cross Blue Shield plan, which they have multiple plans, but this plan that these individuals are signed up for, they, that plan pays the patient, and it's the expectation that the patient pays their providers. This is not just to ambulance. This is happening across the, the state as well as the nation with some of these Blue Cross Blue Shield plans that pay patients. And then, they are not paying their $25,000 hospital bill. They, yeah, so this is not just to, to EMS. This is also happening. So, my understanding now is that many of these bigger organizations, such as hospitals or big provider groups, uh, are starting to consider taking action against Blue Cross Blue Shield because this is the, the issue that is happening and these people are pocketing. They allow themselves to go to collections because they've got the money in their bank, right? So...
Well, I guess that's a little bit of where I was going, is what action can, can we take? And so, I don't know that it can be answered today, but, you know, they, they've actually received the compensation for the, the service and then not paid for the service, in essence. Because it's like, wow, that's a lot of money here.
So, I can give you a little bit of historical perspective, but a, a number of years ago, we, um, filed a complaint with the State Insurance Commissioner, um, about the practice against Blue Cross Blue Shield. And again, Sandy's correct, it's not, it's not all Blue Cross Blue Shield plans. It's certain plans, but it is specific to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And, uh, so we filed a complaint with the Insurance Commissioner, um, had a hearing. Uh, the Insurance Commissioner made the determination that it was allowable under state law. We then went to, or under NAC. We then went and tried to change NAC, um, had zero success there. And then our third step was to try and take legal action against the people individually. Um, and at the time, the District Attorney's Office and, um, the city manager recommended against doing that because the numbers weren't that high. And if you go through here by comparison and compare the amount of money that the city's not getting versus what it would cost to litigate, it probably still does not make sense to lit- but that's really the next step we'd have to take. The city would have to litigate against those people individually as defendants. And so, that was the reason, when I was with the city, we chose not to go any further with it because it just, it, it, it didn't make sense financially. Now, the environment's different now.
But maybe with the hu- I don't know, or maybe with the hospital, if it's happening, we're, do it to get well. Or maybe it's a piece of legislation we sponsor as Carson City.
At the time, Blue Cross Blue Shield was not, was not doing it for Medicare Part A stuff. Now, if, now if what you're saying is they are against the hospitals, then, I mean, if they're not paying the hospital, that, that's where the, that's where it would stop. But it was always to Part B people. So, um, you know, ancillary providers. That, that's the only place it was affected.
Just commenting that it's wrong. It's wrong to take money.
And Stacy is correct on that. I mean, the, if we wanted to pursue again, you start with the State Insurance Commissioner and file the complaint again, um, in moving forward. And that's, you know, we would have to ask our other partners if that, locally, what it's looking like. I just know in articles that I've read nationally, this is an issue that has popped up and has been, you know, brought to the attention of the, the business of that this, these plans are not, they're paying the patients and, and we do, we're monitoring because we see there are certain patients that might be more routine in, in their need for ambulance services, um, because they need the money. I don't know. I don't know if that's true. It's just that there, we're, so we try to kind of at least monitor that part of it.
And if you're not providing ambulance service, you have the choice to not accept this insurance. A physician's office cannot, can choose not to accept this insurance. A, a provider of X-ray service can choose not to accept this insurance. But when you're in the ambulance business, you can't. You don't have that option.
Anybody else up here on the board? Okay. Public comment, anybody? I don't see anybody. Okay. We'll take a motion. Somebody want to make a motion?
Uh, I move to approve the application to remove the uncollectible accounts receivable.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you. All right. Let's take up, uh, nineteen. Animal Services. Okay. All right. Who do we have up here? I know we got, but for the record, go.
So, for the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. And I'm going to tee this off and then, um, pass the torch. So, we're here today for the discussion and possible action regarding a restricted use lease agreement for professional animal services between Carson City and Nevada Humane Society. And this lea- this lease is from the city to, uh, NHS for property at 549 Airport Road for no monetary, monetary rent, but as additional consideration for NHS's operation of the animal shelter, enforcement of animal control ordinance, which is under CCMC Section, um, seven, and other services for an annual amount of $700,000 with a cost of living adjustment payable by the city. So, with that, I'll let the sheriff speak.
Nikki, before you go on down the road, tell us the difference between where we are now and what this would do. Tell us the difference in, in the contract amount. Is there a difference in that?
No, there's no difference at this point.
All right. Sheriff?
Thank you. I'm, I'm just going to take about one minute of your time. Um, for the record, Sheriff Furlong, uh, obviously on the county side. I also sit as a member, uh, on the, uh, Humane Society's board, um, and, and receive in-depth briefings on, on a monthly basis of what we are doing, not only here in Carson City, but regionally. Uh, I would like to comment from, from the sheriff's side, that the Humane Society has, has provided, uh, exemplary, nothing short of that, services here in Carson City and worked with the organizations of this community. Um, and that does serve around the clock. Uh, our, our needs are being met, um, in every case and, uh, especially, I don't want to say especially, but I'm gonna, especially those, um, um, control officers that are out on the streets dealing with the public, um, just super professionals. And, and I really do appreciate that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Greg and let Art come on up here as well and, and introduce, um, Ms. Lisa Schutte, who is a huge portion of the community's response towards animals.
Okay, ready? Good morning.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Greg Hall. I'm the Chief Executive Officer. Okay. Uh, thank you. I'll try that again. Uh, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Greg Hall. I'm the Chief Executive Officer for Nevada Humane Society. I'm, uh, happy to be here. Good afternoon to all of you. Uh, to my left is, uh, Art Westbrook. Uh, he is our organization's Chief Operating Officer. Um, many of you may know Art. Uh, he's been with our organization, uh, for a number of years and has worked his way up, uh, through the ranks. Uh, prior to the time that Art was the Chief Operating Officer, he was the Carson City Manager. Uh, Art is also a resident of Carson, um, and a, a very notable member of the community. So, we're happy to have him here. And, uh, of course, Lisa Schutte from Cassie, uh, I'll let her introduce herself, but we're happy she's here as well. I just wanted to make several minutes of, uh, uh, statement, um, in support of this contract. Um, I would like to let you know, we also have other staff members that are not present today, working at the shelter. Uh, we have Lisa Russell, uh, who is our shelter manager. She has 25 years of animal control officer experience. She came from Florida. Uh, we also have our, uh, newly entrenched, uh, Assistant Shelter Manager, Clay Johnson. He's one of our rising stars, uh, from, uh, Reno and, uh, applied for the position and received it, uh, in the past few months. Um, by way of contract history, uh, as you may know, this, um, relationship started in October of 2014. Um, I was on the Board of Directors at the time. Uh, I spent five years on the board before coming into this position. I can tell you, we were very excited at the time, uh, to be, uh, able to have this opportunity. Um, uh, you know, our name is Nevada Humane Society. We do have, uh, uh, an impact statewide, but particularly in Northern Nevada. And prior to that time, uh, we already had an impact in, uh, Carson City. So, this was a natural evolution for us. And, uh, we were really pleased, uh, um, that you trusted us with this obligation. The, of course, the new shelter, um, in, uh, uh, almost exclusive, uh, part to, uh, Cassie, um, was completed in October of 2016 and, uh, we moved into that shelter. And, uh, therefore, it triggered, uh, the ability to renew this lease for a 10-year period. Um, I just wanted to say, we really appreciate, uh, the opportunity and privilege to provide these services to the community. Um, every one of our employees and Board of Directors is a very big animal welfare supporter. So, it's not just about doing the job. It's about, uh, saving lives. And we're, uh, very appreciative that Carson City and Cassie are partners in this, um, endeavor as well. Um, the, um, a couple of metrics I'd like to share with you, just to kind of give you an idea of what has transpired over the past couple of years. Um, our adoptions have increased year over year, despite the national trend, which is that, um, animal welfare in some ways is doing a really great job, especially in states, uh, like Nevada, and particularly in the North, where there's a, uh, actually a supply need for adoptable pets. Um, but despite that, we have increased year over year, uh, adoptions in Carson City from, uh, 2017 to 2018 to the tune of 17.7%. Um, we're on pace to have an additional 18.8% increase this year. So, we're very proud of that. Um, that's what it's all about, um, at the baseline for us. And so, if we can keep, uh, finding great homes in Carson City, uh, we're doing our job well. Um, our live release rate, uh, right now in, uh, Carson City is 93.5%, uh, which is outstanding. Uh, there's always room for improvement. As you may know, the no-kill threshold, uh, standard is 90% or higher. Um, and we've made, uh, great progress in the past year, particularly with life-saving rate for kittens. Um, the, uh, low-cost spays and neuters, uh, we've continued to increase over the past couple of years. In, uh, last year, we did 783, uh, which was a over 100% increase from the previous year. I will tell you, there's more room, uh, for growth there, and we're absolutely attacking that head-on. Same with low-cost vaccines. Um, we did 700, 1,719 low-cost vaccines at our clinics last year, which was a dramatic increase from the prior year, but, uh, which, in which we did 368, but that was a low number for us that year. So, um, uh, it is a very large increase, but we can do better, and we will do better. Um, increases in service, we've committed, despite the fact the contract, uh, has remained the same. Um, you know, we'll do whatever it takes to provide the service that's necessary in the community. By way of example, we've, uh, increased our hiring for animal control officers, and we now have three full-time officers rather than two. And that's just need based, uh, based on the demands of the community. Um, we also have increased our, uh, trap neuter and return, uh, staff. We now have, uh, two coordinators where we used to have one, and one is based at full-time in Carson to provide, um, extended service in Carson as well. Um, the, Carson City's not a, a net, uh, revenue generator for Nevada Humane Society, but we do want to continue to provide outstanding service to the community. So, we will do whatever it takes to work with our partners. Uh, we do get grant money. Uh, we do fundraising. Um, some of our best, um, donors are right here. You know, Dick Campani, um, is providing a car for our duck race and has, uh, for many years now. And so, um, you know, we're, we're happy to, to look to the support of the community, um, to supplement, uh, the funding that we get from the city. Um, the, uh, just in conclusion, I'll say that, um, we just got back from a, a conference, uh, in Dallas, a best friends conference. And one of the things they did was roll out a nationwide map of how animal welfare is doing. And one of the comments that was made in our regional breakout session was how outstanding Northern Nevada was doing, particularly in comparison to Southern Nevada. And not to denigrate them, but it just, uh...
That's okay. You can denigrate them.
Thanks. Glad you took this off.
Right, go ahead.
But, uh, but, but actually, we help, uh, down in the South as well. We do transports from the South. So, we're all in it together. It's about saving animals' lives. But, um, they specifically pointed out the job that Northern Nevada was doing, and, and Carson City's a, a great part of that. So, you should congratulate yourself for being a very, um, animal-friendly community. Um, the, we asked that the, uh, contract be approved. Um, there have been some recent minor modifications, so I do need to bring it back to the board. But, um, certainly if passed, uh, in this form, I will make the recommendation to the board and, um, Sheriff Furlong, I'm sure will as well, uh, that this be adopted and approved. Um, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or pass along to Lisa.
I didn't, I can...
Art, do you want to go first? Who, who's going next?
Art.
Art?
Oh, Art, I'm sorry. Art, Art is also available for questions. That, that's our, we wanted to make our presentation brief, but, uh, Art's got a ton of knowledge in his head. And so, he's here, um, to answer any questions.
We're both lawyers. We know how those brief, as brief things go. So, well done, Greg. That's okay. Linda, Lisa?
Hi, Lisa Schutte, um, founder of Carson Animal Services Initiative. Uh, and I work closely with, um, Nevada Humane Society in Carson City. Um, you know, I just want to speak briefly to add to what Greg said. Um, what Nevada Humane Society is doing for our community is incredible. Uh, for starters, um, our shelter is open every day except for Thanksgiving and Christmas. So, it really provides, um, community service, weekends, day in, day out, uh, into the evening hours. Um, the trap neuter return benefits the community in that there is a reduction of the feral cat population, and it's also done in a way that is, is humane. Um, community, some communities will try to kill their way out of a problem of feral cats, and that just creates a vacuum where other ferals come in. And so, um, it's, it doesn't work. Uh, TNR works very well, and, um, this community is building on that with the help of some other local nonprofits, such as Carson Tahoe SPCA. Um, so there's really a beautiful collaboration. Um, NHS works with Cassie for outreach. And so, we sometimes reach out and talk to them, not only how can you, uh, how can we help you, but how can you help us? Because we get so many phone calls from people within the community needing help. And, and it's not, um, that other community agencies aren't willing or able, but they're just not designed to, uh, help some of these folks. And so, uh, when I reach out to Art, he is always so supportive, as is Lisa Russell. The low-cost vaccination clinics, um, I was there, uh, a week ago helping. And, um, what a wonderful opportunity, not only for people who otherwise wouldn't or couldn't get their animals vaccinated, but, um, to come in and really see what the shelter's about, see what's available. And, um, because then when they bring their kids, they're now introducing their children to the idea of adoption because they're at a shelter. So, that's another benefit. The active outreach, whether it's an off-site adoption or something like the duck race to bring attention to, um, adoption in Nevada Humane Society is just wonderful. And it's, that's the beauty of teaming with a nonprofit. Active volunteer programs, again, NHS, um, work with volunteers. And what I have found through the Cassie journey is, sometimes there's a huge problem, but when you create, um, an atmosphere of allowing people to come in and be a part of a solution, and when you make the ability to help something that is doable and easy, people really will help because they want to help. So, I thoroughly support, um, this partnership. And I am so grateful that Carson City has teamed with Nevada Humane Society. Uh, and I am so grateful that Carson Animal Services Initiative has such a wonderful relationship with, um, this wonderful nonprofit and with Carson City because we're all in it together. And whether you're an animal person or not, I think we can all agree that we don't want to see suffering. We want to treat animals humanely, ethically, and, um, we want public safety to also be on the forefront. So, they provide that. Thank you.
Okay. You three stay there. Lori, Soufaj Bagwell, and then Soufaj Jomi.
So, just a couple little things. I want to start off to say how much I've enjoyed, um, kind of, uh, working on the Animal Services Committee for the la- I can't believe it's going to be five years, but...
It is five years.
I know. I was starting to think about that and thought, wow, five years. But, I really want to appreciate that, um, that committee really is the eyes and ears of the community itself, to be able to hear, um, their thoughts about the services provided by, by, by you. And I have to say that, I think I can speak on behalf of the committee that you're always responsive, and that no matter the issue that we bring up, you, you try and accommodate it, find a way to meet it. Um, that you're just very responsive to it. And I think the committee is just thrilled to have such a good partner in the city. I think we've, uh, worked out the continuum of the care of an animal, because I, I look at it from every state... continuum of the care of an animal, because I, I look at it from every stage, right? And I think that we've done a really good job with dealing with the difficult animals in the community, but doing it in such a great way. I think it's been better for the sheriff's office, and I just want to commend you and hope that that relationship continues as a cooperative efforts. And thank you for that. But then, Ben, I would love if on the record, we had just two small, couple little tweaks that we're interested in, and I think you already alluded to, you're okay with it, but I think we are going to need that for the record. So if we could have that, too.
Ben Johnson, Deputy District Attorney, for the record. Thank you, Supervisor Bagwell, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a few comments for the record. There was a question about why we're bringing the contract forward, because the old contract has not expired yet. It's my understanding that if you look at the old contract, there's all these references to the old shelter and the new shelter. So it's my understanding that it was always contemplated that after Humane Society moved into the new building, the current building it's in, that the new agreement would be drafted and prepared. So that's what we're doing. The, you'll, the changes from the original agreement include the cost of living adjustment that's going to be capped at 5%. And there's a breakdown in your packet to show the percentages over the past several years. You can sort of see historically where that number's been at. And since the agreement was, the materials were posted, I did receive some comments for requested changes from board members. So we'll start on, if you look at page three of 24 of the contract, under 5B consideration. We're going to add some language acknowledging the fair market rental value of the property, and I believe it was calculated to be approximately $180,000 a year. So even though the rent is not actually going to be charged to the Humane Society, we're going to add some language, just acknowledging what that rental value would be. The second change is on page eight of 24, under subsection E near the top. This deals with staffing level, levels, and it basically says that, you know, staffing services and the services provided by the NHS, the community won't be reduced. We're just going to beef that up a little bit by adding some language to the effect that NHS will not voluntarily reduce the number of paid staff in a way that results in a substantial reduction of the quality or quantity of services that the city's receiving. And then the final comment that I received on page 10 of 24, under subsection four, invoices and quarterly reports. In addition to the reports that are already listed there, board members would like to see a report regarding the hours worked by paid employees as well as unpaid volunteers. And I believe Mr. Hall may have a comment about the way that the volunteer hours are reported. But other than that, those are the changes that I've received so far, but we're certainly open to hearing additional comments. Thank you.
Greg, you want to, you want, you want to answer that, Greg?
Yeah. Excuse me. Absolutely. Thank you, Ben. So the volunteer hours, they are self-reported. We just wanted to make sure that was acknowledged. We do use that data, and we publish that data internally, and we have metrics to try to increase the number of hours. But I did want to just make sure it was clear that we do rely on self-reporting. We don't keep time cards or anything like that. So we believe that there's been consistency in that. We do require them to report it, but we don't always find that they, that they do. So sometimes it's under-reported.
Okay. I've got two other lights up here. Stacy, you want to go then, John?
I, I, I wanted to ask if, if we've, so, so Kenny, Chief Vaughn, Nikki, if, if you feel the agreement in terms of scopes, scope of services covers disaster response efficiently, do you feel as though they're capable of providing disaster services or services in, in the event of a disaster? Because it's, because obviously, it's considerably more than just, you know, picking up stray animals and the day-to-day activities that go on. So I just want to make sure that you feel the agreement is sufficient to address that.
So Nikki Aker, for the record, yes, I do. And we have had instances where they have been in a position to help us and have really stepped up to the plate and helped us through our situation.
Good. And secondly, just, just out of curiosity, could you tell me how big your board is and how many members from Carson City are on your board?
Currently, we have 16 board members, and two of them are from Carson. And we're actively seeking more board members from Carson City.
Okay. I'd love to see that personally. Thank you.
Welcome.
John, Supervisor Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment. First of all, I want to thank Lisa for all she's done in this regard. Secondly, if we had, and I'm not trashing any other vendors, and I use that term loosely here, obviously, but if we had all vendors like you, I'd be, my job would be a lot easier. And so I want to thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Other comments of the board? Public comment? Anybody? Okay. Board, are we ready for a motion? Who wants to do it?
I'll do it.
Supervisor Bagwell.
I move to approve the agreement as amended by the record of Mr. Johnson.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion?
Yes.
Discussion's in order.
Question to the motion maker. Ben didn't read in specific language. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that what you're authorizing in the motion is for staff to draft language that would be agreed upon between the parties and is not therefore coming back to us.
Correct.
Second agrees.
Second agrees. Okay. On the motion, further discussion? Hearing and seeing none or in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos nay? Thanks. Thanks, Greg. Say hello to your board. Say hello to your dad, too.
Thank you. I certainly will.
All right. That concludes the regular part of the board. Let's go to non-action item board of supervisors, updates, future agenda items alike. Anybody want to start?
Hope that everybody probably already knows, but we're going to have Jazz and Beyond starting in about 10 days, nine days. So the world should know, it's a great event.
Enjoy the music.
Any other comments?
I can't believe Kenny left without mentioning that National Night Out is next Tuesday. So I'm surprised he didn't mention that.
We're going to do it next Tuesday, yeah.
It's, it's a great community event, so.
Brad, sorry.
This weekend, Carson City's version of Hot August Nights will be here, running Ybrung.
Where's that?
All over town. I think downtown, probably Max Casino is where it generally is. So if you like hot rods, this is your weekend without having to go up to Reno and fight in the crabs.
I should have mentioned it this morning, but I went to the fair on Saturday, and I was a little bit, I, I was prepared to go park at Walmart and take the bus, and, and I didn't have to. So I was a little disappointed in that. Parking was okay, but the attendance didn't seem to be great. But it was a great event. And, you know, it just, yeah, it was a great event. I was a little disappointed in the attendance, at least when I was there. Of course, it was a pretty hot Saturday afternoon, too, so.
They were there all to watch the, what do you call it?
The demolition derby, man. They were, they were fired up. Fired up.
Well, next year, let's, maybe we should, maybe we should challenge each other.
[laughing]
Maybe I'll just throw the gauntlet down right now, that I would challenge, I don't know, we have to get sponsor in a car, but I think there's some value in challenging each other.
I'm not sure the insurance covers that.
And Brad cannot bring any guns.
Well, no, but he could bring that, that, I parked right next to that, that...
The Monstrosity?
The monster out there. Not the truck monster, but the, the, what do you call that, Brad?
Challenger.
The challenger.
I'm pretty sure you're not going to bring that out for demolition derby.
The challenger. Is that the 700 horsepower one or the five? What is that?
That's the 400 and some more.
It's got more horsepower than my Kia Soul.
Okay. All right. Other comments? Anybody? Just a couple comments. The Reno RTC, the Washoe County RTC is, is bringing back the, the shared federal framework approach to trying to cooperate with, you know, bringing different projects back to our, our federal delegation. They've done it in the past. I've been, I've gone to those meetings. Actually, I went to DC with them once. It's not a bad idea, as long as we're all capable of making sure that we get our fair share out of it. But I think it's, it's a good idea to, one, stay in tune with what our neighboring counties are doing on, with respect to asking the federal government for assistance. So if anybody wants to participate in that, I'll shoot you the email, and you can go. There's a meeting this afternoon, I think at 3:00, but I don't know whether anybody's going to make that one. Second, yesterday, was it yesterday, Nancy, that you were riding that thing?
Oh, a couple days ago.
Couple days ago. I got a call from, actually, it's kind of an interesting one. I mean, a little bit of history. A lady who went through the Circles Initiative and then came out and got her degree, and she's a CPA and all that stuff. I don't know if she's a CPA. She's an accountant. She works for a company called Clever Mobility. And they came through the Adams Hub. They're an entrepreneur through the Adams Hub. And they are creating a national center here, right above where the old Ken Jones, where Ken Jones Insurance was, right above Poorhouse and that area. So that's going to be their national hub. And they actually brought in one of their, it's, it's a scooter. And I know, you know, we've got all kinds of issues with scooters. We don't even have an ordinance on it. But what their proposal was, and it's not a firm, firm proposal, they just came in to say, you know, at some point in time, we'd like to put 10 out on the road, not for creating a market here. We'd just like to be able to see what happens and, and get some data and some information about how scooters operate and whether or not they can operate safely and things of that nature. But I thought it was interesting that, you know, we have someone come, actually coming out of the hub who has created, you know, who has a solid business going in, in our community. So that's about what I've got here today. Anything else? Anybody? Okay. We ready for concluding public comment? Anybody? Okay. Are we ready then to, don't let the record reflect, I don't see any concluding public comment. We ready to adjourn, folks? Hearing no objection, we're adjourned.